I would like to call to order the August 16th, 2021 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. It's good to have everybody with us tonight, and we would like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are very pleased to have with us tonight Pastor Jack Munford from the Rock Christian Church to bring our invocation. Welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jack Munford. I'm the new pastor of the Rock Christian Church. Our services are at 10:45. I'd like to invite everyone there. We all need it, amen? We all need it. Please bow your heads with me as we go to the Lord in prayer tonight. Heavenly Father, we lift up the leaders in this room. The decisions, the conversations, the debate, the policy, they've been charged with God. Strengthen these leaders in trying times. Give them patience, give them wisdom, compassion, God. Guide them and guard them in their duty. Bless and protect them and their loved ones. Help our public servants to uphold the Constitution, to represent the citizens of this great country and our county, to listen with empathy and to communicate effectively. May all of our residents find rest, success, and peace because of the decisions, the behavior, and sacrifices of our board present in this room. We thank you for this great nation, the freedoms we enjoy, and request for your protection from enemies foreign and domestic. We ask all of these things in the incomparable name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, and welcome to your new position.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you there.
God bless.
Okay. First up on our agenda is the approval or correction of the minutes, and all of you have copies of those in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented, or are there any corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next is the approval of the agenda, and you also have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page 14?
Amen.
Okay, we have a motion, and I think I heard a second from Lynn. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. We'll let, we'll let, we'll let the clerk figure out who spoke first. So is there any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to recognitions and presentations, and we are happy to have Debbie Brandon with us for 2021 Second Quarter Supercab Co. Employees. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm happy to be here to report on the Supercab Co. Peer-to-Peer Recognition Program that offers Cabarrus County employees a way to express appreciation and recognize a peer as a Supercab Co. I'll remind you, and some of, a lot of people probably don't know about this program if they're here tonight, so I'll just give a little example of it. The vision of the Supercab Co. Program is to provide a workplace where employees thrive and connect with the goals and purposes of Cabarrus County. The goals of the program are to promote workplace significance, where employees celebrate accomplishments daily, celebrate connections with employees, have a sense of belonging at Cabarrus County, foster employee growth, where peers collaborate and bond over shared experiences, also to recognize contributions, where peers collaborate and understand that the employees understand how their daily work helps America thrive here. In the second quarter, we had over 448 Supercab sent, with 226 employees receiving peer recognition as a Supercab Co. A list of the Supercab Co.'s are in your agenda, but I'd just like to give you a few examples of some of the recognitions that were sent, and how these accomplishments support the county's strategic priorities. Theresa Wilkerson, from the Construction Standards area, was thanked by a peer in another department for walking them through the Exela Plan Room process. This is in support of our sustainable growth and development priority. Daniel Reese, who is a brand-new employee in finance, received a Supercab Co. for approaching a project using critical thinking and attention to detail. This contributes to our transparent and accountable government priority. Angelique King, one of our social workers, received a thank you for covering training for foster parents when that department was shorthanded, creating a healthy and safe community. Gina Razor, a librarian, was recognized for assisting a library, a library patron, with obtaining assistance through DHS programs, providing both resources for culture and recreation and working towards a thriving economy in collaboration with other county services. And finally, I'd like to recognize Andrew Dexter. Drew worked for ITS and received a Supercab, excuse me, thanking him for his help. Sadly, Drew passed away last month, and we were able to provide him, we weren't able to provide him with this public recognition in front of the board. Drew was one of our Supercab Co.'s, and he's missed by his peers, and he's missed by me. Thankfully, our Supercab Co. Program sends us an email to the Supercab Co. as soon as it's submitted, so I know that Drew knew he was appreciated. So receiving a Supercab with a specific, timely, and meaningful thank you can truly make a difference to an employee. Thank you to all those who took a minute to send a Supercab, a Supercab to a peer, especially whoever sent that thank you to Drew, and congratulations, and thank you to all our Supercab Co.'s.
Great. Thank you very much. We have an extremely dedicated group of employees here that do things every single day to make those of us sitting up front here look good, and we cannot say thank you often enough. And so thank you for helping to direct that program that, that, that makes some of those recognitions. At this time, we have a Child Support Awareness Month proclamation, and we're happy to have Susan Dillon to present that.
Hey, good, good evening. I have with me the three child support supervisors, Paula Gilliland, Jennifer Loughlin, and Joanne Tovlin, as well as our administrative associate Kimberly Gravely with me. We would just like to take the time to thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to read the Child Support Awareness Month proclamation. We work each day with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, the courts, and a lot of the attorneys in town to get our job done, and we would like to thank them first and foremost for all the work they do with us. So I will take a moment to read the proclamation. Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County, a proclamation. Whereas children are entitled to financial support from their parents, and Cabarrus County continues to improve its efforts with child support collections. And whereas in state fiscal year 2021, over 12.7 million in child support was collected from parents of children whose cases are managed by Cabarrus County Child Support Services. And whereas there are nearly 5,100 active child support cases in Cabarrus County, working to ensure that approximately 5,700 children receive financial support from their parents. And whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from both parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens. And whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks at court, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and enforce child support orders for Cabarrus County's children, one of our state's most vital resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of August as Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County.
Thank you very much, Susan, and we appreciate your efforts and, and all of those in your department for this very important work, as you've pointed out in the proclamation. Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation this evening?
It's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Economic Services Appreciation Month proclamation. We're happy to have Michelle Creamer for that presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mike. I'm going to read the Economic Services Appreciation Month proclamation. Whereas individuals, families, and children are entitled to public assistance, services, and support they may be eligible for. And whereas food and nutrition services is a USDA federal food assistance program that provides low-income families the food they need for a nutritionally adequate diet. And whereas Medicaid and North Carolina Health Choice is dedicated to providing access to physical and behavioral health care and services to improve the health and well-being of over 2.1 million North Carolinians. And whereas in state fiscal year 2021, Cabarrus County Department of Human Services Economic Services Eligibility Staff processed over 9,075 food and nutrition services applications and 15,747 Medicaid applications, meeting federal and state timeliness requirements in both programs. And whereas there are currently 44,896 active Medicaid recipients and 26,859 active food and nutrition services recipients in Cabarrus County. And whereas Economic Services Staff in Cabarrus County work to ensure individuals, families, and children receive access to medical care and financial support for food and nutrition services. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of August as Economic Services Appreciation Month in Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation as read?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we thank you all for the hard work that you do in that, that area. Okay, we move now to informal public comments. We have a number of people here tonight to speak at the public hearing regarding the gun ordinance, and so I think I've got all those separated out. I have two other public comments. I'll call on those first, and if there's anybody that I missed, if maybe a card got in the wrong stack, just, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll get that corrected. So you will, if you would, when you approach the mic, give your name and your address. Each person has three minutes for their comments, and there is a timer here at the podium as well. And so our first public comment is Rob Stevenson.
My name is Rob Stevenson, 1519 Handsome Lane in Concord. I'm a 20-year resident of Cabarrus County and a small business owner here in Concord. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Dogwood Classical Academy and their legal right to purchase the property at 4855 Milestone Avenue in Conneplis without any interference from Cabarrus County. Now, I don't really have a dog in this fight. I don't have children that will be attending the school. However, I'm a concerned citizen. I'm in favor of school choice, and I'm against government overreach. History shows the property in question was occupied by Cardinal, which was previously Piedmont Behavioral Health from 2010 to 2017. The county originally entered into agreements with Piedmont and Cardinal, and the building was constructed, I believe, before any of you were serving in your capacities on the board. Building was vacated in 2017 when Cardinal fled to Charlotte. It's been for sale since. Cabarrus County did not make an offer to purchase until earlier this year, which was declined by Cardinal. Dogwood Classical made an offer to purchase that was accepted, which included a substantial down payment. It's my understanding the county chose not to make a competitive offer beyond their original, which was rejected by Cardinal. To a citizen like myself, it would appear that the county is kind of making a bad decision here, and potentially destructive political decision by attempting to interfere with this property being sold to Dogwood by Cardinal. With the sad state of the public education system in North Carolina and Cabarrus County, parents are desperately seeking educational alternatives, and Dogwood has positioned themselves to immediately begin offering such an alternative. Simply put, the best and immediate use for this property is the future home for Dogwood Academy. It's what the community needs and what the community wants. I believe the county has access to other buildings and property for whatever the intended use was when they placed their offer. In summary, I think any further interference by Cabarrus County on the legal sale of the property at 4855 Milestone Avenue by Cardinal to Dogwood would be an overreach of power, and I think it's, would be an affront to the citizens of Cabarrus County, especially those desiring school choice for their children. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Our next speaker is John Moore.
Commissioners, thank you for being the servants that you are. I appreciate that. I, as a previous person, do not have a dog in this, in this fight. However, a mind is a terrible thing to waste. I'm a graduate alumnus of North Carolina A&amp;T, 20 years as a rocket scientist working at the Johnson Space Center. Ron McNair, Challenger astronaut, was a fellow alumnus, very good friend. He was thrown out of a library in South Carolina when he was 12 years old because he was black. Two weeks before the Challenger, I asked him, Ron, what are you gonna do once you finish this flight? I'm gonna retire from NASA. You'll never hear this anywhere else. I'm going to retire from NASA, and I'm going to teach at the University of South Carolina. His scholarship was a full scholarship provided by the state of South Carolina, provided he left the state. That's how he ended up in North Carolina, going to school. South Carolina did not allow him to go to the University of South Carolina to attend, but he was gonna go back as a PhD from MIT and teach at the University of South Carolina. And it wasn't being vengeful. A mind is a terrible thing to waste. My four sons graduated, one from University of Texas, full scholarship, second one, PhD from Southern California, full scholarship, third son, NC State, full scholarship, all state universities. A lot of indoctrination happened to them. My fourth son attended a private university, Mercer University, Macon, Georgia. You heard of Lynnwood. You heard that at school. Jimmy Carter spoke at his commencement exercise. Mind is a terrible thing to waste. This charter school will provide 1,200 seats free to all the students, absolutely free. Now, what's their mission? Develop students in mind and character. Build academic fundamentals. Teach classical, not this critical values. Teach civic responsibility, the ability to respond, unlike somebody that slept while Afghanistan failed. The ability to respond in a civic manner, instill integrity. July 21st, I went to Raleigh. I took 15 patriots with me. We roamed the halls. We talked to our senators. We talked about Convention of States, where we will make a difference. I'm going back to Raleigh on Wednesday. When I was there on the 21st, I talked to Paul Newton, and he shocked me when he told me that this Board of Commissioners flip-flopped from doing eminent domain to saying, we're not gonna do eminent domain. Shocked me when he said that. We prayed with Paul Newton. We prayed with him, laid hands on him. Yeah, I'm a minister. We prayed with him, and then he prayed in the full session of the North Carolina Senate because Lieutenant Governor, my friend, Mark Robinson, asked him to. A mind is a terrible thing to waste. Please, please, please reconsider this eminent domain. It shouldn't cost you anything. This is a conservative county. We can find a solution that works for everybody, a solution that works for everybody. That's all I'm talking about. Salisbury High School principal asked me when I was a senior, what can we do to affect the smooth merger between a black school named after a black poet and a white school named after a Confederate colonel? I said, that's simple. All we gotta do is name it after the city. Everybody loves Salisbury High School. A mind for each and every one of you is a terrible thing to waste. My kids are products of private schools. Please, please, please give these 1,200 students in this area an opportunity to grow and not waste their minds. And again, the only time I've been across the street was when I went to get my concealed carry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, was there anybody else that desired to speak during public comments that was, did not want to speak in the public hearing? Okay.
I think I gave you the wrong spot, because I'm speaking on Capitol Hill.
Okay, if, if you'd like to come up now and state your name and address, and I will try to find your card and pull it out of the other stack.
Angela Canel Simpson, 139 Ashmont Drive, Conneplis, North Carolina. Good evening. I am a Cabarrus Rowan County girl who has a teacher's heart, and I've been able to live in this area for the majority of my life, but I've also lived in the great state of Texas, the beautiful island of Maui, Hawaii, and I taught English in China for two summers. So I truly have a teacher's heart, and that's who's speaking to you tonight, but I know this curriculum personally because I got to see it firsthand while homeschooling my niece with this very curriculum last year. Cabarrus County is known for great things, known for its industrial foundation, small town that supports small businesses, and families in friendly environments, also community and entertainment were known for great things. So why not add another excellent academic choice to the families in this area? I speak to you tonight not as a parent, but a former educator who is also a product of private education, a 1987 graduate of First Assembly Christian High School, which is now Cabarrus Academy. I've seen their curriculum, and it's excellent. Hillsdale College has developed an extremely broad, yet basic foundational education model that Dogwood Academy will use. From the start of every morning, they review each day what they've taught the day before, so students are gathering that information on a daily basis. They're strong in their reading, their writing, and their arithmetic, including cursive, which most of our public school systems no longer teach. And you need that if you're signing any public document. As we know, when you buy a home or you buy a car, you've gotta sign your signature as well as print your name. The science and the arts, you heard the gentleman talk about the foundation of the arts. Our students and our children today, most of them don't have any idea of the foundations of Beethoven and the great artists like Da Vinci. This is what this school is chartered, is modeled after. They will learn the great poetry and arts and leaders, literature and music. They will be academically challenged while also learning to embrace and grow from the very best of academia, much like yourself and myself had when we were growing up. Their test scores, and I can attest to this by seeing my niece's test scores last year when she was tested at the end of their school year. She was two or three years ahead of her grade level, and she was only in first grade just by being in this course for one year. Dogwood Academy will strengthen our communities with educational options, drawing even more families to our community. So I want to encourage you, instead of trying to stop this just because of, you know, financial gain for the county, think about the gain it will have to the students and the families in this area. Again, I'm also a supporter of choice because I'm a product of family having a choice to choose private or public education. Neither educational system all have pluses and minuses, but I believe every parent has the right to choice. So not, let's not stop trying greatness to come once again to Cabarrus County. Instead, let's embrace this amazing school and offer it to the greatness that's already a part of Cabarrus County. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I like, we don't normally make comments during public comment time, and we've had three speakers on behalf of Dogwood, and, you know, I want to say a few words, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
We're within restrictions, obviously, because there is a, some litigation going on, but I want you to know, Dogwood especially, first off, I appreciate you being here to speak, and everyone else that's here, for whatever reason it might be, to speak and take a stand on what you believe. We may not agree, but we can agree to disagree and still be friends when we leave here. But I want to tell you, this board, me in particular, and I know the board members and the county manager, we are not against Dogwood. We never have been against Dogwood. This situation here is between Cabarrus County and Cardinal Innovations, whom we disengaged from a number of months ago for the same reason that a number of other counties disengaged from Cardinal. Cardinal's supposed to be taking care of our people, our disadvantaged and the people that need help, and we worked with them for years, literally, I've been on this board for six and a half years, and we could not make any progress. So we disengaged. It's unfortunate that Dogwood stepped in in the middle of this arrangement that we had and we thought was worked out. We thought it was worked out. We thought it was done, and then all of a sudden, Dogwood shows up, and they make an offer that was more than our offer, but we already had an agreement. So it's just very unfortunate that Dogwood stepped in, and I hate it for them, and, but I just want you to know, and the viewing audience to know, because I got tons of emails and phone calls from people about this subject, and I just want you to know that we are not and we have not been against them. And I wanted to say one more thing, too. You talked about financial gain. Well, it costs this Cabarrus County just as much for a charter school student as it does for a public school student. The big difference between public school and charter schools, and this is a good thing you, as taxpayers, would appreciate, we do not build charter schools. They build them themselves. Do you know what it cost us to build the last high school that we built here in Cabarrus County? It exceeded 70-some million dollars for a high school out on Weddington Road. So that's $70 million we wouldn't have to worry about if the charter schools, because I'm school choice. I, I think that the more charter schools they build, the better, because that takes the load off of the county. It takes the load off of you as a taxpayer. But the money that we pay out's the same, whether it's a charter school student or whether it's a public school student, and it's, it's a huge amount of money. So, but the, the bottom line is, we are not against Dogwood and never have been. They just got in at a bad time during what we thought was a done deal with Cardinal. But that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman, and I wanted to rest on that because I want people to understand that it's not underhanded, it's not something that we're trying to keep from people. We're not. We want people to know, and, but I wanted to set the record straight, though, and I hope that helps you better understand the situation that we've been in for quite some some time. And I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And before we move on to our next item, just want to make sure that I got everybody that wanted to make public comment outside of the public hearing. Yes, sir, if you'll make it real brief. Our timer's not working, so you went over considerably.
All I'd like to say, I'm not gonna take all your time.
If you want the, tell vision audience to hear it, you have to come to the microphone.
I appreciate your comments, sir. And as I said, I don't have a dog in this fight. My kids aren't attending the school there. But I'm asking for a solution. I'm asking for a solution. That's all I'm saying. Like I said about the high school, we need to find a solution so everybody wins. This needs to be a win-win. It doesn't have to be a fight. It looks bad to have a Cabarrus County conservatives, a school that has conservatives principals, and we can't come together. Find a solution, please. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, we move now to our consent agenda. And those are items that have been discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. We typically do that in those meetings and allow the public two weeks to offer any comments that they might have on them. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Does that move?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to new business. The first item up on the agenda is the modernization of the discharge of firearms and air guns ordinance. We will have a public hearing on that item. Before we do that, we're going to hear from our deputy county attorney. He is going to talk about the ordinance and the process that has occurred to make these adjustments. Then we'll allow time for commissioners to ask questions of him. And then upon completion of those questions, then we're gonna ask Sheriff Van Shaw to come up and make some comments about this item. And then we'll offer time for commissioners to ask questions of him. Following that, then we'll open up the public hearing and, and get comments from the public. So I'll turn the floor over to David Goldberg, our deputy county attorney, at this time.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and good evening, commissioners. Again, my name is David Goldberg. I'm the deputy county attorney. County Attorney Rich Cook is on line above us, but I'll be sitting in, in person. On July 3, 1967, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners adopted an ordinance regulating the discharge of firearms within the unincorporated areas of the county. This ordinance prohibited the discharge of firearms, BB guns, and air, air guns within 500 yards from any business or residential district. The ordinance defined this as any territory in which a street or highway where 75% or more of the frontage therein for a distance of 300 feet or more is mainly occupied by dwellings or by dwellings and buildings in use for building purposes. There were exceptions under statute for lawful direction of law enforcement, state-licensed hunting, as well as under, for self-defense. This only applied within the jurisdiction of the unincorporated areas of the county and not within the municipal or city limits of any city in the county. The penalty for violation was a Class III misdemeanor punishable by up to a fine of $500. On June 21, 2021, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners enacted the current ordinance. This ordinance amended the 1967 ordinance and as a result banned the discharge of firearms and air guns, but made no reference to BB guns, from any occupied building or residence, business, house of worship, educational facility, park facility, or any other public gathering facility, regardless of whether these places are occupied. There was minimal changes otherwise enacted. The same exceptions applied, and the jurisdiction was consistent, and the punishment was consistent for violations. The proposed ordinance today would revise the, would revise the existing ordinance. Subsection A, paragraph 1, would define an air gun. It means a device designed or used to expel projectile using compressed air as a propellant with less than deadly force. The firearm has its traditional definition as a device designed to propel through explosive force. It also defines shooting ranges. It means an area designed and operated for the use of firearms, air guns, silhouettes, skeet, trap, black powder, or any other similar shooting. Subsection B of the proposed ordinance tonight concerns the manner of discharge. It prohibits a person from discharging a firearm or air gun regardless of distance and carelessly or heedlessly so as to endanger any person or property without due caution or circumception in a manner so as to endanger any person or property and resulting in the unlawful property damage or bodily injury of another. These two provisions are modeled after North Carolina state law regarding reckless driving. Paragraph 3 through paragraph 5 prohibit the discharge of firearms while, while under the influence of an intoxicating substance or, or Schedule 1 controlled substance. It is modeled after the driving under the influence statute in North Carolina law. Paragraph 6 prohibits the discharge on, from, or across any public street, highway, or Subsection C concerns the discharge on or around the property of another. Paragraph 1 prohibits the discharge of a firearm without the permission of the owner or the lesssee or the agent thereof's permission at the time of discharge. Paragraph 2 prohibits the discharge of a firearm so as to shoot the projectile onto the property of another without the, the landowner or lesssee's permission. Subsection D governs the restrictions on the location related to other structures and properties in the area. It prohibits the discharge of any firearm within 500 feet or an air gun within 100 feet of, one, an occupied building, or, or two, a residence, business, house of worship, educational facility, park facility, or any other public gathering facility, regardless of whether these places are occupied, but not including places owned by the person discharging the firearm when in compliance with subparagraphs E and F of paragraph 3, which I'll read momentarily. Paragraph 2 further defines the measurement from the point of discharge to the point of the covered building, being the actual physical distance from the, from the point of discharge to this physical structure of the place or property listed in A and, A and B. There are several exceptions to this 500 and 100-foot restriction. The first exception is this distance would not, restriction would not apply to, at shooting ranges permitted in compliance of Cabarrus County Development Ordinance. The second exception concerns any shooting range or other training facility operated by a local, state, or federal law enforcement agency. That would apply regardless if the person was an employee of the agency or whether a guest or a customer, as long as it's operated by a law enforcement agency. The third exception would be by a person performing a historical ceremony or commemorative function in which such discharges does involve the release of project, it does not relieve, does not revolve the release of projectiles. The fourth exception would apply, it would exempt a person participating in a school or organization sanctioned instructional or recreational activity intended to further the use of safe firearms practices by youths. The next exception concerns the ability for a person target, shooting, target shooting on his own property or on the property of another with that person's permission. This exception would apply if, one, the person discharging the firearm exhibits reasonable regard for the safety and property of other persons. Two, uses a natural or man-made backstop located behind the target sufficient to stop all projectiles shot from the firing line to the target from escaping. Three, this has on his person written permission for such activity from all persons owning any of the types of places or structures listed in paragraph 1A or B, which are located within 500 feet of the target shooting activity for firearm discharges and 100 feet of the target shooting activity for air gun discharges. That reference refers to the, the earlier mention of occupied building, residence, buildings, house of worship, et cetera, regardless of occupancy. The next exception concerns, concerns persons hunting on his property or with the permission of others. In that instance, the discharges on their property would not be subject to the, to the 500-foot restriction if, one, the person exhibits reasonable regard for the safety and property of others, persons, and, two, has on his person written permission for such activity from all persons owning any of the types of places or structures listed in paragraph 1A or B, which are located within 500 feet of the hunting activity for firearm discharges and 100 feet of the hunting activity for air gun discharges. As before, that 1A and B refer to the references to occupied buildings as well as, as homes, residences, businesses, places of worship, parks, school facilities, and other public gathering places as referred to previously. Subsection E provides a list of general exceptions that would exempt someone from the entire ordinance, not just the distance requirement. That includes discharges related to a person in defense of person or property. Two, a person acting pursuant to lawful directions of law enforcement officers. Three, a person hunting birds or animals in compliance with chapter 113 of, of subchapter 4 of the North Carolina general statutes. That's referring to any state-licensed hunting activity. It also exempts officers and enlisted personnel, personnel of the armed forces of the United States. The next exception is, exempts civil and law enforcement officers of the United States, federal officers. The next exception exempts officers and soldiers of the militia and the National Guard of North Carolina. G exempts officers of the state, of the state, as well as any county, city, town, or company charged with the execution of laws of the state when acting in their official duties, as well as training. And the last exception is discharges from a person protecting personal property against the attack of any dangerous or destructive animal. Subsection F is consistent with the previous ordinances, making it clear that this ordinance only applies to the unincorporated areas of the county, and it would not apply within the municipal jurisdictions of a city within the county. G is consistent with the previous ordinances, referring to section 1-7 of the existing ordinances by which the fine, this would be punishable by a Class III misdemeanor punishable by up to a fine of, up to $500. Commissioners, that's a summary of the previous ordinances and the proposed ordinance before you. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions and however I can be helpful.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Goldberg?
I have one quick and quickly. Can you clarify subsection C on paragraph 3? Because I think you write it both ways on the ceremony, whether, I don't think they have projectiles, but you said does not, and this says does. So you, can you just clarify that? I assume we're not, when we do a 21-gun salute, we're not firing projectiles.
That's, that is correct, Commissioner. I saw that typo as I was reading it.
That's, that's what I thought. So it is, does not, is the way it should be.
It does not. So it does not involve the release of projectiles.
Okay, thank you.
So that will be corrected if, when adopted, if it was adopted in that form.
And just to be clear, the 1967 ordinance was 500 yards.
Yes, Commissioner. That complied to, that was 500 yards, 1,500 feet radius from the point of discharge.
Today, what we're proposing is 500 feet, not yards.
That's correct, Commissioner. We're, the proposal ordinance has a distance requirement of 500 feet from the point of discharge.
Which is considerably less than where we were. And then as far as the permissions, can you go into a little detail about that? Without that, are people able to just come hunt on somebody else's property? Or how does that work? Can you be a little, give a little clarification there?
Yes, Commissioner. So there are two, two separate, I say, references to permission. So one is subsection E governing the discharges on or around the property of another. This prohibits someone from, one, shooting a firearm on someone else's property without their permission. So you, if you were not, if you weren't the owner of the property, you would need to have the permission of the property owner. That, that is not have a writing requirement in that instance. The other prohibition regarding permission is you may not shoot onto or across the property of another without permission. So you can, if you, if the person you were shooting onto gave you permission. The other references to permission are the exceptions that only apply to the 500-foot restriction. And that refers to if you are shooting on your land or if you're shooting on the land of another, and you have permission from the landowner, and you, and there are these covered buildings within the 500-foot radius, then you would need, to be able to make that legal, you would, one, as I said, it would have to either be your land or be, have permission to shoot on that land. Two, it would have to, it'd be safe as it refers to, it refers to reasonable regard for safety and property of other persons. You would also have to use a natural or man-made backstop when you're within that 500 radius. And you would need to obtain the written permission from all owners of the building, the covered buildings within that 500 radius. So if you were on your own land and you were shooting into a backstop, and there were houses or dwellings or houses of worship or parks within that 500-foot radius, the ordinance as drafted would require that the person discharging the firearm to have written permission at the time of discharge.
Thank you.
Other questions? I had a couple. The, the 1967 ordinance, which specifies 500 yards from any business or residential district. And that means if, that's 1,500 feet. So if you're within that 1,500 feet or any of those applied, of course, the, the reason for making the adjustment, as I understand it, was that definition was hard to measure from defining the boundary. But in those circumstances, 1,500 feet, you could not shoot a weapon?
There was no exception, Commissioner, for the own property, you know, we've talked about. The only exceptions that the entire ordinance was under the direction of law enforcement, self-defense. There was also a statutory exception for hunting.
And so now, we've decreased that amount from 1,500 feet to 500 feet, and we have provided a very, rather long list of exceptions that even though the distance has been reduced from 1,500 feet to 500 feet, in addition to that, if you can ask for these permissions, you can still shoot in areas where you could not before. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the backstop provision, which, which I don't think has any specifications on it other than, and I don't see that, that sentence right now, but what does it say? Could be a, a, a ground, a berm, or?
A natural or man-made backstop located behind the target sufficient to stop all projectiles shot from the firing line to the target from escaping.
And so a, a natural backstop would be a berm or a mound of dirt or something, something that would stop that projectile from leaving that area, right?
It, it is a functional requirement, so it's not specific, it doesn't have, it doesn't reference any specific requirements or specifications, but rather it's more functional in the sense that, if it stops the round, it's effective.
It's effective, okay. So some, under the previous ordinance that had been in place since 1967, and then also under the current ordinance, that flexibility is not allowed to property owners to shoot a weapon on their property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So in the event that this proposed ordinance that does provide a number of exceptions and gives people a number of different options and opportunities, if that ordinance is voted down tonight, then we stay within the current ordinance, which is 1,500 feet, without all those various exceptions?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Mr. Goldberg? Okay, hearing none, I would ask if Sheriff Van Shaw would come forward and give us some input from his direction. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chairman. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. I know this has been an ongoing conversation and discussion that we've had. I know this has been an ongoing conversation and discussion that we've had. I wanted to give a little context to it, based on multiple conversations with folks within Cabarrus County. And that is specifically that at no time was there an effort whatsoever to restrict gun rights. It was looking at a problem that has existed for a number of years and been discussed at different times throughout the years. I know ever since I came to the sheriff's office, it has been an issue, and primarily it evolved around the enforcement of the 1967 ordinance. And that when one of my deputies went out on a complaint of a discharge of firearms, we would get there, and because of the measurements that have to be conducted and the determination of what a residential district is, the deputy could not make that determine, that legal determination. That had to come from zoning. So we could never bring about, unless it was a gross violation in that it was inherently dangerous, most often, we would not be able to reconcile the situation, other than trying to appeal to making someone aware, trying to reach an agreement, at least temporarily, until we could get a ruling from zoning that it was in fact a residential district, or it wasn't. And then have to return and explain that that was the case, and then keep up with the fact that this area was now declared a residential district. So if we had another discharge in that area, then that previous ruling would apply if it was in that 1,500-foot radius, which would sometimes impact a neighbor that was across the street and not necessarily, you know, in violation, or had been in any violation of the ordinance previously. But because that residential district had been declared, it basically stopped the discharge of firearms in that area. So when, when, I know when Commissioner Strang took office, she was, she dealt with a number of people that had come to her and challenged this ordinance, and in turn, she talked with me about the enforcement of it. And I explained to her at that time the difficulty. And when she offered to say, "How can we do this?" I said, "I would like to see an alternative measurement method, not to restrict it any further, not to do anything other than to make it more enforceable, that if a person was 300 feet, or 200 feet, or 500 feet from a house, we could do a measurement and be able to determine whether that person did violate an ordinance or not." So that was the initial request. Out of that came much discussion, and the fact that Cabarrus County's population has changed dramatically since 1967, and that in 1967, 1,500 feet was not a big deal if you lived in the county. However, in 2021, it's significant because of the growth. So that's where the discussion came out of, of what can we do to reduce that distance, make it easier to enforce, explain exceptions like hunting and those types of things in an ordinance. And that's what's been done. For a little bit of context, to give you some idea, in 2020, we received 341 reports of discharge of a firearm in the unincorporated area of the county that we went out and checked on. In 2020, I'm sorry, that was in 2020, I'm sorry, in 2019, we received 341 reports. In 2020, we received 410 reports of discharge of a firearm. Now, not all of those were discharges of firearms. We don't know until we get there. Some of them were fireworks, some of them were other loud noises, but there is an increasing number of those types of calls. One of the things we want to do is be able to resolve them. Our approach has always been, as it is with any ordinance, we're going to do our best to educate first, because most of the time, people just don't know. Make them aware of the situation, seek compliance before we ever get to enforcement, especially on ordinances. So whether that's the noise ordinance, sound amplification ordinance, whatever the case may be, we seek out, you know, compliance and understanding and those types of things. So I thought it was important to come before you and the public to say what the genesis was for the change in the request, that it was trying to do that. In the efforts that have gone on over the past month, and the input by another, number of people in the community, I've had folks come and meet with me, telephone me, talk with me, many are in the room tonight, and explain to them what we were trying to do. And we tried to incorporate some of those. I shared those with you all at the work session, as well as with Commissioner Strang. So I just felt it was important to give some context, that there was never an effort to restrict, you know, a Second Amendment right. It's only to have a ordinance that makes sure that good, responsible gun owners do exactly what they always do. And those that carelessly and recklessly discharge, and we all know those, they're out there, that we have some way to enforce and deal with that group. Many in this room know this to be true, that I'm a proud supporter of the Second Amendment, a strong supporter of the Second Amendment. So it is, I'm a hunter. I have my hunting license right here in my back pocket. So there's, there was never an effort to restrict that in any way. So I just felt like it was important for folks to understand where I come from as the sheriff, and where I know we were all coming from in our discussions about this ordinance, changing this ordinance in the future. I look forward to the public comments, because there may be things we don't know that need to be brought up, but I think it's an important discussion to reach a good resolution to this, one way or the other.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have questions for Sheriff Shaw?
Just thank you very much for being here. Now, you said there were two, two goals. One was clarification of measurement?
Yes.
And does the current ordinance that is on our agenda tonight, does it do that?
The, the one that's proposed tonight?
Yes.
Yes, I think it does, because it gives a definitive distance, and it's a straight-line measurement from the structure to the point of discharge.
Okay.
So it's very easily interpreted.
Okay. And the other point, you wanted to make sure it was not more restrictive, and not to make you repeat yourself, because I think you just said that, but can you say that again?
Yes, that's correct.
Does this make it more restrictive?
No, it does not.
Okay. That's, that's what I think, too. And Mr. Chairman, the other question then becomes, if we don't adopt this, we're reverting back, I think this is, was your question to our attorney, if we do not adopt this, we're going to revert back to the more restrictive ordinance. Is that right?
That is my understanding.
That was the answer?
Yes.
Yes, the current ordinance right now has that 500, that 500 yards or 1,500 feet from any occupied building, residence, and business. So that is the law right now, as we're speaking. And if you don't do anything tonight, it will continue to be the law after tonight.
Okay. Well, and just as a side note, I said this when we had the discussion about the Second Amendment sanctuary. I, too, am a gun owner, multiple gun owner, and like to bird hunt. So it's, it's, you know, we're, I'm certainly not interested in making it more restrictive. What I am interested in is supporting local law enforcement. And if you tell me that this was a goal of yours to make your office work better and function better, then I'm in support of that, because in your own words, we have done that.
Yes. I mean, that's, that was my purpose behind requesting a change of the measurement, was simply to make it where my officers could, you know, interpret if there was a violation, or if there wasn't, and educate folks. And it was very hard to do it under the 1967 ordinance. I think that when we changed just the measurement, people realized and saw that that, that measurement was not new to the ordinance. It was there since 1967, but when they saw the measurement as it would be applied today in modern Cabarrus County, it was excessive. And so when we looked at other county ordinances, it made sense to reduce that distance to be concurrent with a lot of other ordinances that exist in North Carolina. And there's various ones, but that was, that was the reason behind it. And then, of course, trying to come up with multiple exemptions or exceptions to it to cover things like 21-gun salutes, you know, those types of things, that hunting, all that, make sure it was clearly spelled out.
Well, I do look forward to the comments, in case there is some, some point that we have missed or don't, don't fully realize, but it seems to me we have accomplished the goal that we had set out to do. But with that, I will yield back to the chair.
Thank you, sir. Other questions for Sheriff Shaw?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, thanks again for being here and bringing this to us. One of the main complaints that I had, and I got several hundred emails, thank you all for writing, and I got quite a few phone calls, and I took as many of those as I could. But one of the chief complaints, and I just wanted you to elaborate on this for a minute or two, if you will, about why does the gun owner have to get permission to shoot over on his neighbor's property? Now, I understand it to me, but I want everybody else to understand, you know, that you're infringing on somebody when you shoot on or go on their property. And a property owner has the right to know who's on his property and what's coming in on his property. And so for me, it's just a common courtesy for me. Now, have you had any complaints with people discharging over on other people's property without permission and things like that? Would you elaborate?
We do, we absolutely do. I can't give you a number as it relates to the total number. I can best answer that question with a conversation I had with a Cabarrus County citizen today. And his situation was that he appreciated that point within the ordinance about not firing on another's property. He owns nine acres in Cabarrus County. He has a berm set up. He's in, in a good location for discharging firearms. He, his concern is if someone discharges around onto his property without his permission, one of his three children could be in those woods. And so, you know, for him, it was a safety thing. And I go back to what the real purpose of the county ordinance is, and that's the, the safe discharge of weapons within the county, to make sure that we don't have a tragic accident like that. And, and we haven't had one. I don't want to jinx us in that regard. We haven't had those accidents, but we know those things can happen when there's a careless discharge. So I think, too, it's, and I think most gun owners would agree, the vast majority, that is the right thing to do, to let someone know if you're shooting on their property, because they may own livestock, they may have pets, they may have other things that you didn't intend to impact. You didn't set out to hurt anything, but you could, because you may have, not have knowledge of it. And that's, that's the best way I can explain it.
And I totally concur with what you're saying. I mean, out where I live, I've lived there about all my life, and I got a good man-made berm right behind my house back there that I can shoot into, no problem. But I know that if I go out in the front yard and I'm going to shoot, that I'm going to be encroaching over on my neighbor, and these people, they got seven little grandkids running around there, and they could be in the, in the woods, you wouldn't have no way of knowing it. But if you told them, you know, or asked them, "I'd like to be able to shoot my gun up this way," and they'd give you written permission to do it or not. If they say no, well, you're going to have to go somewhere else, just like I would, you know? But it's only safety, and we don't want to encroach on nobody's Second Amendment rights, because that's one of the rights that we have to protect dearly, right down to the bottom.
Other questions for Sheriff Shaw? I had, did you have something? Please, go ahead.
I have a question, but I do want to thank you for reaching out to multiple people when requested and answering the questions, and I always got favorable feedback. I think once people can talk and hear what your, what the goal is, it certainly makes a difference, because of the many emails we got over the weekend, there were about three pre-written emails. And there were a few individual emails, but in the pre-written emails, it came speaking against the 500 feet, which makes you think, okay, do they realize that it was 500 yards? And so I don't know, these organizations that sent those emails back, not sure they understood what we were doing here, based on the emails that we received. So, you know, your help in explaining that, I think, is very important. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple, did you have something? Commissioner Strang, go ahead.
I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to clarify, similar to what Van said, or Sheriff Shaw, that this was done in a manner to protect the gun owners and the citizens. It's a delicate type, tightrope we've had to walk with this. And we've learned through this process that between the emails coming from various organizations, there is a lot of misinformation out there that has caused a lot of confusion and a lot of heartburn for us and y'all. I do appreciate everybody's comments, and I've talked to dozens and dozens and dozens of citizens here in Cabarrus County. What I don't appreciate is the emails coming from people out of county. You know, that, we've been inundated with that, from other, from an organization that sending, you know, emails from Greensboro, and Scotts County, and Jones County, and they don't live here. So that, that's, that's a little frustrating when we're trying to take care of you guys. You know, you're our number one priority. Safety is number one, in my book. And, you know, Second Amendment rights, as most of you know me, I am the Second Amendment big supporter, do not want to disrupt any of that. And I think the misinformation has really caused some people to get upset unnecessarily, because when I've spoken to folks, and I know when you guys have spoken to some folks, they calm down. They're, they're like, "Oh, okay, we understand." So I am looking forward to your public comments to see if there is anything that we missed, we need to revise, we need to touch on. But I'm happy you're all here, and I appreciate it. And the other goal for us is, we talked during our work session, education. You would not believe how many people did not even know there was a 1967 ordinance, until we did a slight modification in June. That started the conversation, which has been good, because we don't know every square mile of this county, we don't know how your property is situated. We've learned a lot, we've compared, Sheriff and I have looked at several ordinances from various organizations. We looked, we have looked at the NRA requirements, we have looked at the wildlife guidelines. We have really taken this to heart. I've had conversations with the district attorney, as most recently is today, to make sure that everybody is protected constitutionally on both sides of the issue. So with that, I am looking forward to public comments, but I just wanted to clarify and just make a point that, you know, if there's been any confusion, I hate that, but I think in an effort to educate, like we had mentioned during the work session, this is a good way to do it. Also, us being transparent on this topic is utmost importance. I mean, we're not going to try and ramrod something through without anybody knowing about it. That's just not how we operate, and I, and I wouldn't allow it, you know? So I just want you to know that, where we're, where we're standing on this, so, and where we're looking at. But I am looking forward to the public comments, and thank you again for all being here.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, you know, I save mine to last, because maybe if they all get answered, then I don't have to, have to ask them. But the, I guess, and I've received a large quantity of emails about this. I think probably grassroots North Carolina generated a great many of them, and the first quest, the first item on that was, "Vote no on this ordinance on August the 16th." And that's kind of where I asked the question, and I did have, have an opportunity to talk to several people on the phone, and I said, "Do you understand what happens if we vote no on this ordinance?" That means that we stay with the existing ordinance, which is much, much more restrictive than what, what we're, we're talking about here. So I hope I'm not asking you to repeat things too much, but am I correct that this ordinance that we're voting on tonight is 66% or greater less restrictive than either of the two preceding ordinances?
Yes, that's correct, because it was 500 yards, now it's 500 feet. So it, as, as the current ordinance is, because the change was made to the measurement only in that ordinance, that it left the 1,500 feet.
Right.
And that's what we've been attempting to do, is come up with what is more practical for gun owners in Cabarrus County.
So does this ordinance that we're voting on tonight accomplish anything other than making the previous ordinance less restrictive? From distance, from exceptions?
Yes, it gives a number of exceptions that, that were not present in the other ordinance, the older ordinance.
Right.
So I think it, it does give a lot of options there, where, you know... So, I think it does give a lot of options there where, you know, property owners can enter into an agreement to say, "Yeah, it's fine. Let's shoot together here." You know, those types of things. And it's merely saying, "Okay, then if you do that, commit it to writing so that if somebody's not there, the complaint comes in, but somebody else is complaining, and the property owner's not there, you have that written." It's very much like hunting. If you're hunting somebody else's property, you have to have the permission on you when you're approached by the wildlife officer because that property owner may not be present, but the written permission serves. That was kind of the genesis of that whole point, is that you can clear that matter up very quickly.
Right. And had we not put that permission option in this new ordinance, then the answer would have been no.
Right.
You would, you could not do that at all under any circumstances within those. So, that's creating greater flexibility, greater opportunity to have more freedom with, as long as you're a good neighbor.
Right.
Have permission with your neighbor.
Right. And I understand some concerns that you have a neighbor move in, and, you know, they're not, you know, pro-gun, pro-Second Amendment, and they don't want to give that permission. But, you know, that's also their right in as much as it's my right to own guns and discharge guns lawfully and do what I like to do. I do have to recognize that if somebody doesn't want to give me permission, then that's it. You know, I've talked to different people about the fact that some, this is not a big issue with them because they live beside close family and friends, so the permission is not a big deal. Some of them already do exactly what's described in the ordinance. But I also realize that there's going to be some where it falls into that, "No, I'm not giving you permission." But, you know, that's also trying to be respectful of their right, and that's part of the permission piece as well.
Right. But if we stay with the current ordinance, then they don't have that option at all.
Correct.
So, still creating greater flexibility. And the other question that I had, is there anything about this ordinance that in any way impacts hunting any different? Does it impact it in any way, negatively or positively?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, there's actually a general statute that says a commission can't, you know, pass an ordinance that overrules state hunting laws. So, from that perspective, it would be invalid i-if it did. So, I mean, that's clearly in the general statutes. I've had a conversation with, you know, wildlife supervision about that as well. And, you know, so that's, you know, based on what I've been told, and I've educated myself on, that's where it is right now. Again, if someone knows something differently, then I think that's what that public comment is for, is to find out the things we don't know, if there's something out there.
Right. Well, I'd certainly echo what Commissioner Kiger has said. It is my intent to support law enforcement in Cabarrus County. You are an elected official who was voted on by the people of Cabarrus County by a pretty big majority, and I certainly respect that. The citizens of Cabarrus County have chosen you for that role. And so, it would be a very rare occasion that I would not follow your advice and guidance on issues regarding law enforcement. So, just want to publicly say that we appreciate what you do, and we appreciate all the time and effort that you have put into this ordinance, trying to make it as fair as possible and to give people as much flexibility as possible, which is, that's a pretty big accomplishment. We're talking about replacing an ordinance that was written in 1967 when the population of Cabarrus County, I'm pretty sure, was less than 75,000 people. And we're still trying to loosen that and give additional opportunities in a county that now sits at 226,000 people. So, I just want to publicly thank you for, and I know you've put a lot of, a lot of time into talking to a lot of people in person and on the phone and explaining this. And so, we very much appreciate that, and appreciate your willingness to be here tonight and address us and answer questions.
Well, thank you very much. If you will allow me, I just had one question, and I think it helps to clarify things for Mr. Goldberg. And that in the ordinance, when we talk about the property owner and discharging on their property, that certainly wouldn't apply to their residents. In other words, they would not have to go 500 feet away from their residence on their property. Is that correct?
The ordinance presumes that if you're shooting on your own property, then you have permission within that bubble.
Right. And so, I know I've had a number of questions related to that. I just wanted them to hear from an attorney on that, and since I don't have a law degree, so I wanted to make sure we cleared that up as well.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Okay. As we indicated earlier, we do have a public hearing on this matter. It has been advertised. And so, at this time, I would like to call the public hearing to order. We will hear from folks that have submitted the yellow cards. What the clerk has done, as these have been presented, she has numbered each one as she's received it. And so, I will go in the exact order that we received the cards. We ask that you state your name and address when you step up to the podium. Speak into the microphone so that the television audience can hear you as well. And our timer, the alarm part, doesn't seem to be working tonight. But if you just kind of pay attention, it tells you when time's up. And since we do have, I think we have eight public speakers, if we can keep it within time limit, that would be helpful to everyone. So, our first card is from Jordan Stein, representing Gun Owners of America.
Hello. My name is Jordan Stein. I'm a North Carolina resident and the Director of Communications for Gun Owners of America. I do represent GOAs, thousands of members and activists in North Carolina. And I appreciate the board's sensitivity to the Second Amendment. And I appreciate the board in January of last year supporting the Second Amendment with your resolution. But what I'm hearing tonight is, I'm not sure this is ready for primetime. I don't believe an anti-gun neighbor should dictate, should ban shooting on your property by refusing to give permission. If you're a safe and responsible gun owner and you can, you know, shoot responsibly, but you have an anti-gun neighbor, especially with the growth of the county, that with people moving in, where North Carolina is growing as a state, we're gaining a congressional seat. If someone has a different view than you and doesn't give you written permission, then how can you shoot on your own property? That is discouraging to me. Also, I would say the 500-foot rule would even be a little bit excessive. I know y'all are reducing it from 1,500 feet, but other counties that I have considered is far less than 500 feet. So, with that, just please remember your duty to protect the rights of private property owners as well as the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Brian Yurk, and he has put on his card rep, speaking for the members of Grassroots North Carolina from Cabarrus County.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I am Brian Yurk. My address is 9909 Ernie Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina, if anybody needs to contact me. I'm here representing Grassroots North Carolina, in particular, the members that reside here in Cabarrus County, which I am pleased to say a number of the people, probably the majority of the people seated behind me, are included in those folks. And yes, we have some concerns, and we appreciate, however, of course, your attempts to modify and to modernize as situations change. Increasing development across North Carolina creates conflict between traditional residents and new developments occupying what was previously rural land. With an eye toward respecting the rights of longtime residents, GRNC, as we are called, has adopted the following position regarding local restrictions on the discharge of firearms. Now, I've passed up some that you'll have a copy of these that I'm going to be talking about here. But I'll just reiterate them for the audience. We do not have any model ordinances. GRNC does not and will not endorse or recommend a model ordinance designed to prohibit the lawful discharge of firearms on private property. Notice I said the lawful discharge of firearms on private property. The use of natural topography or man-made barriers sufficient to contain the projectile being fired and prevent it from exiting said property is a reasonable requirement. Minimum infringement on the use of private property based solely on safety of those outside the property should be the basis of any ordinance. Okay? That said, and while we appreciate the reduction from 1,500 feet to 500 feet, as you have mentioned right there, we still find that the 500-foot restriction from structures in 46-2D1 is arbitrary and excessive. Any restrictions should stipulate only sufficient backdrop, either man-made or resulting from natural topography. In other words, if you have a property that's 300 feet wide and 1,000 feet long, and it's a gully, and you have a berm on each side that's going to prevent any projectiles from exiting your property, explain, please, where would be the harm? Obviously, with your ordinance, it would still not pass muster. Okay? So, that's an example. The idea that a property owner should require permission from neighbors in 46-2D3E is an unreasonable infringement on both the property owner's second and fifth amendment, their property rights, and frankly, gives control of the situation to the "not in my backyard" types determined to change the existing character of the area to which they've moved. Now, I would think that this particular board would be sensitive to that because just a few years ago, there were some "not in my backyard" types that objected to Zmax Dragway and the noise that exited that property, so to speak. And how did that work out ultimately when attempting to please the "not in my backyard" types for the group involved at that time? It did not work out favorably. We do, regarding errant projectiles, GRNC recognizes a compelling public safety interest in ensuring lawful discharge of firearms on private property and the results of projectiles not leaving the owner's property unless the owner has an adjacent property owner's permission to do so. That is a reasonable permission that one might ask. In other words, you were talking earlier about hunting on somebody else's property or shooting on somebody else's property. And that certainly, you would have to have permission for something like that. But that is not what your ordinance specifies. Your ordinance specifies that they should have permission.
I apologize for interrupting you, but you have gone double your time. So, if you could wrap up your comments?
Okay. I appreciate that.
And what is your name, sir? Okay. We'll give you three more minutes for Mr. Jeremy Love, and then you can...
Jeff Cockrell. I believe I'm over seven or eight of, we've been talking pretty much about the exact same thing.
Jeff Cockrell. Okay. All right. Just, you just talk away.
Well, I thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. So, getting back to where I was, the exception for existing shooting ranges, we've just covered, of course, the permission, which we find excessive, that you would have to ask permission from somebody else to shoot on your own property. Okay? Now, obviously, if you're asking permission to shoot on their property or if in any way your projectile would be impacting their property by leaving your property, sure, that's a reasonable restriction. Okay? Now, getting back to the shooting ranges, however, the exception for shooting ranges which complies with Cabarrus County Development Ordinance in 46-2D3A is not adequate because it fails to exempt older public or private ranges which are grandfathered under our 1997 Sports Shooting Range Protection Act, and that's North Carolina General Statute 14-409-46. And they're not required to comply with current development ordinances. So, you need to account for that in your ordinance. In general, although GRNC regards policies to avoid projectiles, leaving the gun owner's property to be reasonable, we approach restrictions on frequency, that would be how often, hours of shooting, or cadence of fire for two reasons. And certainly, the "not in my backyard" types could be offended by the fact that somebody might shoot more than once. Okay? So, again, it gets us back to permissions. First, they're unrelated to safety and instead motivated by the desire of recent transplants to change the character of the area to which they have moved. Second, such restrictions hamper defensive firearms training, subjecting residents to greater risk of criminal predation. Now, just months ago, this county commission declared Cabarrus County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary, and we are very grateful for that. But those are just words. Now is the time for the commission to back up its words with action, action which defends the rights of gun owners. So, take a look at your arbitrary number and look instead at safety. Remove the arbitrary numbers. Look at safety and act accordingly, is what we ask. And I thank you very much for the additional time. I thank you folks for the additional time. Thank you, sir. You're quite welcome.
Our next speaker will be Hal Almond Jr.
Thank you, board, for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. I know this has been a very hot topic all along, and I thank Van and some of you folks on the board that were communicating with myself and other friends on this situation. When I first came here tonight, I was going to be not in favor of what y'all had proposed. The only thing I'm a little concerned about, we had asked for the last draft of what had been put together, which she has explained. I have not physically read it. I've just listened to the sound like changes that were made. So, with that being said, in one sense, I'm in favor of some of it, and in another sense, I'm not in favor of some of it. So, it would have been nice to have a clarification of exactly what y'all had proposed for the final draft tonight, that we could all look at a little bit better instead of it being read at the meeting. That's a little concerning to me since we've been in communication for several weeks on this thing. And we had sent you guys several different ordinances, one out of Harnett County, which in my opinion, and several others' opinion, you could have basically taken this one and attached it to what, and made it y'all's and put Cabarrus... and attached it to what and made it y'all's and put Cabarrus County on it and solved the whole thing. We wouldn't even have to be sitting here tonight. So you need to get this stuff out to people when we request it at a reasonable length of time, the night of the meeting. Don't help me none. But like I said, it's a lot better than what we started out with because Van and I sat down, the sheriff and I sat down, and discussed the whole thing and the revisions that you had started to make at the workshop, some of which would work fine. But in my opinion, his, both, on number three exception, half of that could have been taken out and condensed to one or two paragraphs instead of a half a page. So, but other than that, and then also, I presented Barbara with five to six hundred signatures about this situation and petitions. I didn't give you all them, Barbara, I found a couple more here. But anyway, like I said, it would have been nice, basically on what you've said so far and based on what I'm listening from the county attorney, it sounds like you revised a lot of stuff we had concerns about, like asking our own, being on our own property, being able to not shoot on our own property without permission, that kind of stuff. So that looks like it's been clarified. But like I said, still didn't get a current copy of exactly where we're at tonight, except when I got here and listened to this. So, but other than that, that's all I've got to talk about. Okay? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay, and the last card that I have is for Aaron York. Or is that Yurkey? The same name? Okay, very good.
Mr. Jeremy Love, just have two questions of clarification. I did not get it in time.
If you'll come up to the front and speak in the microphone so the television audience can hear.
I was not prepared to speak, but I do just would like some clarification on two things. My name is Mitch Thomas. I'm a resident of Cabarrus County, Conaples, two oh five Dell Avenue. The first question I have is, I just need clarification from you, I guess, would be, on my property, I'm in the city, so this does it, but I do have, you know, I'm a concerned citizen of Cabarrus County. If I have a property that a neighbor's house is within five hundred feet of my property, what this is saying is that I must have their permission before I fire a gun on my property if I can't get from five hundred feet away from their residence.
Could you answer that, Mr. Goldberg?
Yes, sir. So, under current law, five hundred yards, fifteen hundred feet, if that's a, if what you're talking about is a residential district, that is currently prohibited under law right now. You couldn't do that right now. Under the proposed ordinance, that would shrink down to five hundred, from five hundred feet. And if there was a occupied building or a residence and that list we've talked about was within that five hundred-foot bubble, then one of the exceptions that would allow you to shoot on your own land would be if you did safe in regard for public safety, as we talked about, two, a man-made or natural berm or backstop, and then three, written permission from any one of those covered buildings within the five hundred-foot bubble that we've talked about.
So there are two exceptions, other than permission, that would allow me to...
No, no, those would be cumulative, sir. So you'd have to do all three.
Do all three, so still required to get permission?
Yes, under the current proposed draft, you would need permission to use that exception.
And see, that's where I would be the sticking point for me. You're saying you have to get somebody's permission that may be opposed to guns, and you may never get when they possibly moved in after you did, you on the property first. So I think if we were going to make any changes, that would be where I would recommend a change being made. As long as, of course, as long as it was still done responsibly. I'm all for responsible gun ownership, as long as we did it responsibly. But I think that's where change should be made. The other question I have, real quick, to clarify, is how would a sheriff's deputy or the sheriff, any law enforcement, determine where the shot was actually discharged from? Because once they get to the scene, the person may have been in the house for ten, fifteen minutes. There's not going to be a way that I can tell that they could say, yes, here's where we're going to start the measurement to the neighbor's house. All the neighbor has to say, yeah, they were right at my back door, right at my property line, when the person may have been on the other side of their property. I believe you're going to have some issues there too, possibly determining where the shot was actually fired from on the individual's property. So those may be things you would like to look at. But I do thank you for your time. I thank you for your sensitivity to the Second Amendment because I'm a firm believer in it. If we lose that, we lose all other freedoms with it. So thank you, counsel, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Bellander. I'm a Cabarrus County resident, Concord resident. One thing I want to mention, you encourage people to send emails, right? With comments and stuff for this?
No, we did not encourage people to send emails. We welcome people sending emails.
Okay, well, I saw...
But we encourage people to come, as you have, in person.
I saw that you were willing to take emails and read them, and that's why I'm not prepared to speak here because I took the time to put forth that email. I sent it this afternoon before five o'clock, which was the deadline. And I'm surprised that I haven't heard it read or heard it said that it's going to be read.
Let me interrupt you one minute. And we had, during the pandemic, we have had an option for people to send in email comments. Was that effect, and did you receive?
We did receive them until five o'clock, and so those were shared with the board for comment right here. They don't have to be read in two minutes, so...
Okay, where are they? The ones that were emailed in? Oh, the ones that you forwarded some to us. Okay, just wanted to make sure we were covering the bases.
Great, and the other thing I want to say, I coached youth sports for like thirteen years, and I was the umpire in chief, and we made a lot of rule changes. And when you start making rule changes, like law changes, you can open up a whole can of worms with that. And I can see that that may be happening here already, especially the part where you got to get your neighbor's permission. That could cause a lot of friction between neighbors. So you ask a neighbor for permission, they tell you no, and then a neighbor needs a favor from you, you tell him no, now you got neighbor problems. So that's something that could cause problems and that should be thought of when you put these laws together. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else that desires to speak before we close the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. My name is Patrick Shealy. I've been a Cabarrus County resident all my life, live on County Line Road in Mount Pleasant. Just went back to his, one of his questions about the cumulative. When you mentioned cumulative, so if you're within the five hundred feet of an occupied structure on an adjacent property, you still have to have written permission from them and the safe berm and everything else. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. You would, to qualify for that exception within the five hundred feet, it would be, you know, the safe in due regard for public safety, the backstop, and the written permission of the owners of the covered structures within the five hundred-feet radius.
Okay, that was my question. That'd be the only thing that I would, that I think really would need to be looked at again and maybe amended a little bit, but...
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think Representative Pittman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Larry Pittman. Live at two fifty Roberta Road Southwest in Concord. Been in Concord for over thirty years now. I did not move here to run for office, but I have enjoyed serving the people, the eighty-third district now. And I tell you, I appreciate the effort that's being put forward here because I understand just how ridiculous, really, for today, and maybe even back then, the nineteen sixty-seven ordinance was. I've talked with Sheriff Shaw and Representative, or Commissioner Strang, and I had been talking about this a lot, too. And it was a really difficult ordinance to enforce. And that's one of the important things about what you're trying to do now, is to make it enforceable. And I see that there's a sensitivity here to protect gun rights as well as property rights, and I appreciate that. I have worked with Paul Valone, GRNC, and with Representative, I mean Commissioner, I keep trying to get her in Raleigh, I guess, Commissioner Strang. And we've had a lot of discussion, I think it's been very fruitful. I do still share the concern about if you're otherwise, you know, okay, shooting on your own property, to have an adjacent property owner, to have to have their written permission to do that. I think that's a change that needs to be made in the ordinance, that could be dealt with better. Understanding is, you got to have permission, I mean, to deer hunting in Cabarrus County, you have to have written permission and be nine feet off the ground to use a centerfire rifle. And I'm fine with all that. But to have to have somebody's written permission that lives over here or over there, and I'm shooting that way, seems to be a bit much. I have been handling and firing guns since I was six years old. I've been hunting since I was ten years old. First thing my dad taught me was how to be safe with it. I know that's not the case for a lot of people. A lot of people need to learn that stuff that I've known since I was six years old. So there is a need to be cautious, there is a need to be careful about this. But I hope that you will reconsider making somebody have to get permission from the next-door neighbor if they're not even shooting in that direction. So I'd appreciate you considering that. But I do thank you, I thank Sheriff Shaw for his work on this. We met with some citizens a few months back. As you recall from Harrisburg, he had some concerns, and I think they had some valid concerns, and the biggest thing was they just didn't, law enforcement had no idea how to enforce the existing ordinance. So I thank you for your efforts, and I hope this works out well. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question. Why five hundred instead of three?
Don't have the answer to that question. I guess you could say, why fifteen hundred instead of one thousand? Or, and I think that was just an attempt to try, and for the benefit of the television audience, because she was not speaking in the microphone. She asked why five hundred feet instead of three hundred feet. And I think that was just an attempt to improve and provide more options over the existing ordinance. I think the same thing is true with the permission piece of it. That also, the old ordinance didn't allow for that at all. So even if you had permission, you were restricted from doing it. So this, both of those just give greater flexibility, greater options for responsible folks in the community.
I also have that same question because several municipalities in Cabarrus County include local enforcement. Cabarrus County and Midland have a three-hundred-foot ordinance.
Right, okay, thank you.
That also enforces the one in Midland, but it's different in the county, so that's just...
Right, I think the ones in all of our municipalities are different from the one in the county. So at this time, I'm going to allow one more public speaker that has not submitted a card, and then we'll close the public hearing. If you would come forward to the microphone, state your name and address so folks can hear.
I'm Randy Edwards. Live on Gold Hill Road, thirty-one sixty-nine Gold Hill Road. And I have heard what y'all guys are putting together, and I really like it. I just got one sticking point, and that's the permission. I think you talk about this cumulative. If you've got a good place to shoot, all the backstops and all of that, I don't see why I have to get permission. I think y'all guys need to revisit that. That is just not right, in my opinion. I have a good shooting range at my house, backstops, you know, bullet traps. I got a neighbor, they don't mind me shooting, but they might not always be there. And I just don't see how a property owner needs to get another property owner's permission to do that. They, you know, other people don't come to me when they're playing loud music and get my permission so they can play loud music. You know, so I would appreciate if y'all guys would revisit that issue. I think that's a big sticking point. I think you have a real good proposal here, except for that one sticking point there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, before we move to that, since there was a question of enforcement and our sheriff is still here, can we get that question answered?
Absolutely, if I feel...
Sheriff Shaw, would you mind coming back to the podium? I thought we talked about this a little bit at the work session, but we might be, even if we did, let's clarify even more the question about enforcement.
The gentleman's comment is one hundred percent correct. You know, absence of evidence, as in any violation of the law, prevents us from moving forward. So what we would rely on is if the person was still there, making contact with the person who may have been discharging the firearm and explain to them why we're there, and could they cooperate with us so we could see? That's what I spoke about earlier, is our goal is to educate and seek compliance and resolve a situation. We don't get anything out of really writing those tickets and causing someone to come to court over something like that. You know, so it is, it is tough to enforce at times. Sometimes, as many of these folks in the audience will tell you, there's going to be shell casings left behind, but it may be difficult for the officer to determine whether that shell casing is three days old or three minutes old. Very difficult. So it's not a perfect science by any stretch. It is complaint-driven. We don't ride around the county listening for gunshots. We receive a complaint, we go there and try and seek some resolution between the complaining party and who they say was doing it. And sometimes, we can't figure that out. I will say, most of the time, people are very cooperative, and we talk and we get it resolved, and, you know, as it should be. But there are occasions when, you know, we are able, and the person complaining, obviously, if they made a statement to us that said, no, I saw that person standing right there, then they would be required to come to court because we can't testify to what we don't personally see. So in that case, the citizen has to come to court. It's in the case of a lot of things, that if the officer's not present, especially in misdemeanors, if the officer's not present, then the individual bringing the complaint has to appear in court as well, if that makes sense.
It does, and I can appreciate how difficult that is for the officers in a probably what is a tense situation
Right.
that they're trying to fact-find and figure out what's going on. I guess the follow-up would be, there's, I don't think anything we can put here changes any of that. Whatever the numbers are, whatever we have, you've got the exact same issue on whatever call you, wherever your officers arrive.
Absolutely, within regards to that, yes. It's what's available to us and what, because at the end of the day, we have to be in court. And if we don't have the evidence to show the violation, then we can't proceed in court.
Thank you.
I had one other question for you. You mentioned the number of complaints that you had received this past year, which I think was three hundred and fifty or...
Twenty twenty-one was four hundred and ten.
Four hundred and ten. Of those complaints, how many do you know? And if you don't, I certainly understand. Don't expect you to be a walking statistic book, but of those, how many of those resulted in an arrest or a court case or a fine or...
I could not give you an exact number other than to say, and I can get that, number where a citation was issued, but it's very, very low.
That's what I thought.
It is very low that we're issuing those citations. As I said, I mean, the vast majority of folks that we deal with are responsible, safe gun owners. They're doing what they want. When something does arise, you know, sometimes dove season's coming up. And with dove season, you get multiple shots going on in, you know, legal hunting, and we'll get some complaints. And once we go to the complainant and say, well, they're, you know, three thousand feet over there in a field hunting doves, and it's opening day of dove season. in a field hunting doves, and it's opening day of dove season, that they understand. They just hear those gunshots and they don't understand what's going on, and once we explain it to them. And we know certain areas of the county, that when it rolls around every year, we're go, okay, we're gonna have to go, we're gonna have to go over here, and we work through it like that, like I said, educating them. So there's a lot of different circumstances. We can get fireworks complaints, you know, and they come in as gunshots, but we get there and they're not. But as far as the issuance of citations, it's very low, very low.
I think that would come in, where you're talking about normally you're going in trying to educate.
Right.
And then if it became a problem over and over, then you might have an issue. But in the beginning, you're not going out looking, you're, yeah.
No, it, we would have to have gone out there multiple times. I mean, it's very similar to loud music or noise ordinance violation. Our first approach is gonna be, please turn your stereo down. You know, if we have to come back again, we're gonna inform you that if we have to come back again, you're gonna get a ticket. So we seek compliance, because the, we don't need, that's, we need to be moving about doing other things if we can get compliance.
Well, I think when you look at the 500 yards or the 1,500 feet, and you've had a low arrest rate or violation rate, that with a 500 feet, and it doesn't seem like a lot, I don't know if people didn't know about that, 1967, or if it just wasn't a problem or what, but, you know, like I say, at least this would make it better from that perspective.
Right, right.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
I'm gonna make a motion to table this until next month, so that we can address any concerns in this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second it. That's what she wants to do, second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this until next month. Do I hear any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to discuss, I have, first of all, I have no problem putting it off, whatever, but I really would like to put this to bed tonight, I really would. And what I would also like to see is, gentlemen, how, I think you had the Harnett County, what did they do in their county when it comes to permission?
There's no permission from the neighbor.
Yeah, well, you know, and we're having open dialogue, you know, not do I talk to the commissioners, but I can talk with you as well. And that is, that I think, you know, and I'm not always right, I don't claim to be, I just try to live and let live, but it seems to me like it's only, it's only a common courtesy, because you wouldn't want somebody shooting over on your property if your neighbor's up here and he's shooting down on you, or vice versa, and I think...
He told us, he told us that we had to give permission from our neighbor to shoot on our home property. And that's because he tossed that gun out.
Yeah, well, I...
And that's the thing most people's got a problem with, is me having to go ask by them if I can shoot.
Yeah, and I, and you remember, I brought that up, you know, because permission was, seems to be the real issue, you know.
The projectile's going across his property.
Right, exactly.
I understand that permission.
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, but you're talking about...
He said we had to give permission from the neighbor to discharge.
Can you, David, can you clarify that?
Get approved backstop.
David, can you clarify that, because I'm, just like them, I'm confused on that part.
And covered structure wasn't clarified either.
So when I refer to covered structure, that's me not reading the proposed ordinance again, when I say covered structure, that is the occupied, any occupied building, or as the ordinance refers to, as a residence, business, house of worship, educational facility, park facility, or any other public gathering facility, regardless of where these places are occupied. So that's, I'm, instead of reading that every time I say, I've said the covered building.
With any building, any building within 500 feet of that discharge, you would need to
find, if you wanted to shoot within that bubble, you would need to find an exception that we've talked about. One of those exceptions that we've talked about is if you shoot into a backstop and that you have permission within the five, owners of the structures within that 500 bubble. There are other exceptions, but that is one of the exceptions to that other 500 feet. As towards the reference to Harnett County, you know, I can't speak to their ordinance.
Dave, can you clarify, earlier you said that the exceptions, you had to do all three, not just one?
So what we're talking about is, there's one, two, three, four, five, six different exceptions to the 500-foot requirement. So one of them that we're talking about, that seems to be the focus, is the exception for target shooting on your own property. So if there is a build, if you're 501 feet from any other building in the county, you're not subject to this whatsoever, the foot restriction. If you are 499 feet from one of these buildings, an occupied building or the house of worship and whatnot, if you're 499 feet away from the discharge, if you would want to shoot legally, you would need to shoot into a backstop, and you would need to have written permission from whatever buildings were that 599 feet away.
If your neighbor's 500 feet, you're gonna have to go ask him if you can shoot.
To use that exception, it would need to be, you would need to be, you know, on your own property, backstop, and then anybody of the covered properties within that 500 feet. So the idea being that, if you're gonna have a distance, but everyone's okay with, you know, that you're shooting within that distance, even though it's within that bubble, no harm, no foul. That's the intent there.
Well, they don't move, and the next neighbor moving in don't like it.
David, what if you got four neighbors, one on, two on this side, and one over here, and one over here, and like one of the gentlemen spoke about, I'm shooting in this direction, and there's one landowner there, that's the only one you gotta get permission from, because you're encroaching over on that person's land, not the ones on both sides of it.
No, the bullets are not crossing the property line.
If I'm shooting on my property and no bullets are crossing nobody's property line, I still have to get permission from all four of those neighbors if they're within 500 feet.
Yeah. So...
Only the structure that's within the 500 feet?
Yeah.
It's other property owners?
If they have one within 500 feet as well.
Yeah, so...
Within 500 feet?
Yeah, within that 500 feet.
All right.
If you're shooting from anywhere at 500 feet, if there's one of those covered buildings, then it would require, the ordinance is drafted, would require permission from the owners of the buildings within that 500 feet.
Okay, that's what I, all right.
Well, I'm ready, I'm ready, Mr. Chairman, for us to table it until maybe September. And that'll give them back to the drawing board and give them some time to figure it out, because I understand what you're saying, you know, and I want to try to not make it more restrictive, but less restrictive. And that's just where I'm at on it, Mr. Chairman.
Real close, it's not quite there.
Yes.
Guys that's smarter than us can give us some guidance on this, because I promise you, we welcome that. I'm sure Sheriff Shaw and Commissioner Strang and whoever else is working on it would appreciate your input and recommendations or suggestions to help us get it right.
Mr. Chairman, the, I just want to make sure we're all clear, that a table of the motion and a postponement keeps a more restrictive ordinance in place.
That is correct.
Have everybody, we all got that, okay. And that's also not what the sheriff has asked us to do, although I'm okay trying to clarify.
Well, and when I seconded that, I'm not doing that to put it off for a year. I'm putting it off long enough to try to come up with a solution that works, which hopefully can be done in 30 days. I don't know how that happens, though, because we leave each meeting thinking that we've kind of found that ground, and we don't hear anything, and then on Friday of this week, we get bombarded with things, and so that's why you don't get it on time, because three days is when all this comes up, and then you're trying to figure out what it is. So I wish there was some way to have, if somebody wants to, you know, Commissioner Strang and David or something, have one more thing, a get-together where everybody can just come and have an open discussion.
Can you not just do it, amend that part of it? I think that's the problem. We don't like asking...
I'm not done with my comments.
Okay, I'm sorry, if I interrupted you, I apologize.
That's okay, I mean, that's kind of where I was going. If, I don't see the harm if we follow the lead of what the sheriff has asked us to do and pass the less restrictive ordinance while we try to figure out if there's some other tweak that needs to be made. Now, that may not be what the pleasure of the board is, I'm just asking if that's not something that we want to do, provided that any number, I mean, we heard that 500 feet is arbitrary. Well, any number we picks arbitrary. There's not a real reason, again, and I apologize to our sheriff, that's, I mean, we were working with him to come up with the number, to try to do, and I think that's what Commissioner Strang did. So I'm okay tabling, I'm okay tabling what we're doing, I just want everybody to understand, in my eyes, we're leaving a more restrictive policy in place while we work it out, and...
I don't think this number is the big standard, Christian, the issue is having to ask for silence of permission to use something on my property.
They need to come up to the speakers.
Yeah, if you're going to make comments, we have to do it at the microphone. And so just to be clear, if we table this motion and do not vote on it tonight, when we walk out of this meeting, the law will still be 1,500 feet, and it doesn't matter if you got permission from your neighbor or not. It's 1,500 feet, you can't shoot a firearm. And so that's...
We wait 30 more days.
Well, hopefully 30 more days.
At the pace we're going, we're not guaranteed to have this wrapped up in 30 days. I mean, that's the issue, I'm, and I mean, I don't, I don't say that to be ornery, but it, you know, we've tried now for a while to get it wrapped up and cleaned up. So I don't mind waiting 30 days, I just don't know if it's gonna be, if we can get it done in 30 days, at the pace we're going.
Exactly.
But what we're saying tonight, as a Board of Commissioners, is we can't just strike that part and vote on the rest of it tonight. It's got to be a whole package voted on tonight.
If we strike that part, then that means you can't do it at all.
Okay, that's, that's...
If I understood from legal counsel correctly.
Right.
That because it says 500 feet, no exceptions, we were offering that as an additional option to get around that if it was okay with your neighbors.
Well, the problem I have, like the gentleman said, 40, you spend that way for 40 years, we can wait another month or 60 days, whatever it may be. But the problem I see and the feeling, what I'm afraid of is that we say yes to, you guys say yes to this tonight, well, that's done, let's move on to something else, it don't come back to in a month or two months. We forget about it, because life happens, and then...
Or we're in lockdown.
Based on the emails I got, you're not forgetting about it.
No, and I will commit to make sure that we get this done. Sheriff and I will, will work together diligently on this, and we won't put it off long at all.
We'll help any way I can.
We're going to, you know, sit back down at the drawing table. I do have a copy of the Harnett County ordinance that I can share with you all as well. I don't have it physically here with me, but I can email it to you if you'd like to see it. But I'll commit that we will not let this slide to the back burner.
And I understand the permissions thing, you know, and I understand where you guys are coming from. But I also know you got neighbors who, as you say, some of you, that's your concern, somebody's gonna move in and doesn't, so how do you find the blend or the compromise between the two? So I mean, like, if you're shooting straight, I think somebody said, if you're shooting straight out your property and you're not shooting toward theirs, now, I'm not, I'm not your person who understands that much about guns. I've shot a few guns, but you wouldn't want to be around me. So with that said, if somebody's shooting straight out, you know, and you're within that piece, I don't necessarily understand the permissions. If you're shooting over somebody's property, I understand the, or toward their property. Now, and I don't know what I don't know, so somebody will have to tell me why, help me understand that. I don't know.
That's a simple question. We don't understand it either.
Well, but, you know, and, yeah.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. We hear, we had, that is, I hear four yeses and one no. So that motion passes, and that is tabled. So for all of you that are here to talk about this, we will be delighted and thrilled for you to join us for the rest of the meeting, but we did put this down as the first item, so if you choose to leave, we appreciate you coming. Okay, next item is item G2. That is the North Carolina Railroad Company term sheet, and County Manager Mike Downs and Attorney Rich Cook will talk with us about that. If someone would please close those doors as they leave the room.
Huh? I'm trying to find it. Yeah. I can't.
Okay, now I think we can hear, if we can proceed forward.
I'm trying to find it on here.
Oh, he's talking.
I think Rich might be muted.
Oh.
We can't hear him.
Rich is muted. Rich, you're muted.
No, he's on there now, it's not his fault.
Did you find it on yours?
No. They're not numbered, so I can't.
Yeah, I found it on...
You did find it.
I don't know if you could...
Okay, while Rich is trying to figure out what's on his end, the, along with the Project Aqua Marine, make sure I'm on, and that's the project that you're gonna be voting on later tonight, is the North Carolina Railroad is also participating in this and providing a grant to make the improvements on the rail spur from Highway 49 onto the property. And they are putting forward approximately $700,000. In order to do that, they are requesting that the county receive that money and pass the money on to the project. And we've had several, Rich and I have worked with their attorneys for quite a while now to make sure that, while it sounds like a great idea, and we want to do it, we wanted to make sure that there was no exposure to the county, should there be any issues with the project or with the work being done. So the agreement that is here, Rich and I worked with the attorneys and other staff at the railroad, as well as with Paige and Sam. So what we're coming to you now, we feel comfortable that the language in this agreement, that there is no exposure to the county from a financial perspective, we will handle that in a separate agreement with the railroad. So what they will require is that the work be done, the railroad will inspect it, release the funds, and then we will, we will pass the funds through us to the project. In the end, we will request through this agreement that we will hold some of those payments in case there are any other issues that we discover. So we will hold them, Rich, six months. I don't have the language in front of me, so I want to make sure that, right? Okay, yeah, so we will hold those, we will hold those funds to make sure there are no issues for six months after the project is done. If there are no clawbacks needed because of the lack of performance from the company, then we will release those funds as a final payment. So I think I explained that enough, but it is, it's quite an interesting project, so feel free to ask those questions, and Rich or I can answer those for you.
Okay, questions for the county manager on this item?
What is the timeframe, Mike, on when they're gonna do this?
It will be in conjunction with the project as they start their construction.
Probably next year, then.
Yeah, I've not seen a start date. They just want to make sure that as they go through and approve, as you approve the other agreements, they would hope to get... the other agreements, they would hope to get this at the same time.
Okay, any other questions? Another piece to a complicated puzzle that, that has been put together by our Economic Development Corporation, and I think it's gonna be of great benefit to the county. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the term sheet with North Carolina Railroad to be the pass-through local agency for the railroad track improvements for Aquamarine Two and authorize the county manager to execute an agreement with RRB Beverage Operations Incorporated and North Carolina Railroad in accordance with the term sheet with no county money involved for such improvements, and any clawback covered by a holdback on any grants RRB is entitled to from the county and subject to the review of the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we'll prove.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Next item is G3, Economic Development Investment for Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation. And I would like, we'll hear from Samantha Grass on that.
For Paige Castor.
Surprise! We're actually gonna tag team this one a little bit since it's unique. We are presenting this as three separate public hearings, but I wanted to provide some additional context for you all, of course, and then for anyone in the public who may not be familiar with the background. For a year now, we've been working on this project under the codename Project Aquamarine. It's a partnership between three different companies, Red Bull, Rauck, and Ball, and these companies have announced their plans to co-locate at the grounds at Concord on 25 acres to create a vertically integrated beverage manufacturing campus. And together, they will invest over a billion dollars and over six, and create over 600 jobs.
You said 25 acres?
Sorry, 525 acres. 525 acres. And invest over $1 billion and create over 600 jobs, and this is the largest economic development announcement in the history of Cabarrus County. Sam's going to be talking about the specifics of this, of each of these operations and their proposed grants, but I did just want to call out that if awarded at the conclusion of the grant term, 100% of taxes generated by this project will go back to the county, totaling over $5.5 million in new revenue each year. So, we're very excited about this project. We appreciate your support and the support of the staff as we've worked on this, and I'll let Sam come up and talk about the specifics of each of the components and their operation, and then we can answer any questions you might have.
Good evening. So, we'll start with component one. Component one is Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation. They are proposing a state-of-the-art can manufacturing facility producing various-sized aluminum beverage containers. This 800,000-square-foot, four-line beverage packaging facility will be capable of producing 6.4 billion units per year once fully operational. This company is a leading supplier of aluminum packaging for beverages, food, and household products. Site location is at the grounds at Concord, 2321 Concord Parkway South. The projected investment is estimated to be $383,874,000 in real and personal property. They plan to create 220 jobs with average wages above our current county average wage. Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on that estimated $383.8 million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a seven-year, 85% economic development grant. The estimated grant for that seven-year term is $11,345,918. The net revenue to the county during that grant term is over $2 million. I'm happy to answer any questions you have for component one.
I just have one question for you, Sam. Whenever you are describing the entity there and you talk about wages that are above the current county, would you kindly put the amount of the county wages for the benefit of the viewing audience?
Sure.
They would say, first thing they're gonna say is, what is the county average wage?
Absolutely. So, this year currently is $41,255.
In this project, the average is $70,555?
Correct.
I just have a question. Is there a clawback provision on this if something were to happen?
It is performance-based. I'll let Mike or Rich answer.
Yeah, these grants are performance-based. If the property, if the owner or the business does not build what they say they're gonna build and then pay their taxes, then there is, there is no incentive that goes back up. Yes, ma'am.
I think another way of stating that is every project that we approve, by the nature of the way we do it, automatically has a clawback provision.
No, for cash.
If they do not build the building, make the investment, then they don't, they don't pay their taxes, then they never get an incentive at all. Any other questions for Samantha? All right, thank you. So, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on the Economic Development Investment for Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing none, no one approaching the front, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
I will make a motion to approve an economic development agreement, seven years, 85% between Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation in Cabarrus County and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I just want to say a few things before the vote. I just want to make it very clear, I'm not against big business or any, any companies moving in here. My concern is with the tax incentives. Tax incentives are kind of, they're supposed to be designed to lessen the tax burden on our citizens, in which in the past year, several years, our taxes have continued to rise. So, I'm not sure where, where the misstep is. And I looked at our future budget needs, and I have some concerns with those. By allowing incentive for this, you know, how are we going to meet our budgetary needs for the future based on our growth? So, you know, like I said, I'm not against businesses moving here whatsoever. I just am, I'm not a fan of incentives this, this large, first off, because it doesn't do really much benefit to the taxpayers to keep that tax base lower or in line. So, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Any other discussion? I would like to, to say that I think what we just heard from, from Samantha was that by virtue of granting this economic development investment incentive, Cabarrus County taxpayers will realize an additional $5 million per year in taxable revenue. If the, if that taxable revenue were not coming from this investment in our tax base, then that would have to come directly out of the taxpayer's pocket. So, I think that your, your thinking is flawed in, in that regard. This is not money that is coming from the taxpayer's pocket. The money that comes into this community, were it not for our ability to lure them here, not only would we not see that investment in our tax base, but nor would our local citizens have the opportunity to take advantage of these jobs, as you just mentioned, at $70,000 per year, when, when our average is 40, 42. So, this, this is labeled an economic development investment, not an economic development expense. And so, we are investing money to bring these benefits, to create 220 jobs for, for our citizens, and to, to realize 383, almost $384 million in additional tax base in our county. In, in this particular situation, we're gonna talk about the other two pieces of this project that, that will be a billion-dollar investment in the tax base of Cabarrus County, which is the largest investment in the history of the county. So, I think it is definitely a wise investment, and I will proudly vote to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a comment as well. Just like we just talked about the gun ordinance that dated back to 1967, well, things are a lot different, not only for that aspect of our discussion tonight, but for these type discussions as well. We don't just compete locally or in a state no more, you know, I mean, we're, we're competing with other, with global. It's a global economy now, and, you know, if we don't get it, they will. And I think that Cabarrus County deserves it as much, if not more, than the other states or the other counties that we compete against. And, and I know a lot of other states and counties, whereas we may give a monetary incentive, but before the, the person that gets that incentive, before they get it, they do have to cross the Ts and dot the Is, do what they said they were gonna do in the agreement, pay the taxes, and if they've met all of those criteria, and our tax department, David Thrif, he can tell you, they go through that with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that they comply because they're gonna hold us to our end, and so, we're gonna hold them to their end, and if they do what they're supposed to, then we will. But the end result is, though, is we're making Cabarrus County a better place to live because you're gonna reduce taxes. This is just one entity of many, many, I don't know how many, hundreds of millions of dollars that we've done in the last few years that we offered incentives that otherwise those companies would not be here. And just like the, the tape company down in Midland, because of them, well, Amazon, and then we get this tape company because of them, they're making the tape to seal the boxes with. These auxiliary companies come in and one feeds off of another, and so, I mean, it's a chain reaction, and so, it's just good for the economy to, to give them some of the money up front now, but after that incentive period runs out, then they pay from then on, and as taxes go up, theirs go up, just like the rest of us does. But this will hopefully keep our taxes lower. And I'm a firm believer that incentivize, and all counties, all states are doing it. You see it on TV, come here, come there, go to here, you know, they want you to bring your business and bring your people there, and they're willing to pay you to come. And, and we're doing the same thing, and we're just trying to be competitive and do what we can to make things better here in Cabarrus County. So, you know, I'm totally in favor of incentives.
I will chime in. It's a difference in philosophies that will probably go for as long as we go. The side who believes that you're, who's, I can't even say right now what, from what Commissioner Strang is saying, from my side, I look at it as a long-term vision. We are getting money in the short term while we're offering incentives, not the full amount of tax money, but in the time that the incentives are over, then we get the full amount. And so, you know that's coming from a budget perspective. You can plan for that. You have 220 people who have an opportunity to get jobs that are $30,000 a year more than the average wage here. And then you also hopefully get a good corporate citizen that when they come into the area, they give back to the community. Now, there's never a guarantee in that, but, but certainly that's what we hope and what we have seen in many times before. So, I think that for your children who go off to college, for you have people who want to change jobs, I think to have the opportunity to get a job of that kind is worth the investment in this community because something's gonna come here. Why shouldn't it be something that pays more than the average wage? And it's our good companies to offer the long-term investment in this community. So, that's my feedback on that.
Well, we might as well go five for five. We're all gonna comment. I, I think the, the piece for this particular project that needs to be mentioned was this, this community was devastated when Philip Morris left, and this kind of brings it back around, full circle, to now we've got a shining statewide star over on that site that we're proud of, we're happy to welcome them to our community, and, you know, we, we basically have rolled out the red carpet, which we have done with, with other companies who have hit the mark, right? If they don't hit the mark, they don't get the incentive, and they, they hit the mark, then they do. And so, anyway, we do have the automatic clawback. So, I, I, I join you, Mr. Chairman, in enthusiastically voting yes.
Well, thank, thank you, and I think, and those are all excellent comments, but I think to, to, if ever there were a piece of dirt in Cabarrus County in which we could clearly demonstrate the impact to the taxpayers and the tax base if it were not there, this is that piece of property. Because we saw that site contributing tremendously to our Cabarrus County tax base, we saw it contributing tremendously to our job base in the county, and then we saw it all vaporize overnight completely, to the extent that the actual building was demolished and hauled away, and so, the only thing, the only taxes that we were receiving was for undeveloped property. And I certainly will not put our tax administrator on the hook to ask this question tonight, but with some time, he could certainly provide a report that could show the very specific impact to our tax base and how many million dollars in revenue we lost annually when that industry went away, and multiply that times the, what's it been, 10 years or more that they've been gone? So, we're talking about a huge amount of money. So, I think that's about as, as good an example as we could, as we could ever offer. So, with that being said, any other comments or discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
If that motion passes four to one, and we are extremely, I for one, am extremely excited to welcome Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation to Cabarrus County. And now, we've got two more parts to this project, and so, we move now to item G4, which is RRB Beverage Operations Incorporated, and that's Project Aquamarine, Component Two. And welcome back.
Thank you. So, Component Two is RRB Beverage Operations Incorporated. This is a joint venture between Red Bull, Rauck, and Ball. They are proposing a state-of-the-art can filling operation consisting of 1.4 million square feet of factory, distribution, and office space. Site location, again, is at the grounds at Concord, 2321 Concord Parkway South. Projected investment is estimated to be $553 million in real and personal property. They plan to create 323 jobs with average wages above our current county average wage. Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on the estimated $553 million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a seven-year, 85% economic development grant. Estimated grant for that seven-year term is $17,193,120. Net revenue to the county during that grant term is over $3 million. Happy to answer any questions on Component Two.
Okay, questions for Samantha? And so, the $3 million in revenue that you mentioned, that is during the period of time that the incentive is in place.
Correct.
And so, after that time, when they're paying the full amount, it is a significantly larger number. But that would be 3 million or 5 million?
That was 5 million for all three components.
For all three components.
Annually.
Right. That, that will be $5 million added to our income immediately.
Correct.
That we currently do not receive. Great. Any other questions for Samantha? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, what's your... Okay, what's your pleasure on this one, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve an economic development
Excuse me, I did not do the public hearing. Hold that thought. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the front that would like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn the floor back over to you, Commissioner.
How do you know I'm going to make them?
Well, if you change your mind, I'm going to say so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic development agreement, seven years, 85% between RRB Beverage Operations Incorporated in Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review and revision by the county attorney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, and this will have to be from Sam or Paige. Hate to put you guys on the spot, but, you know, we're talking, as Commissioner Strang was talking about incentives from the local government here. These particular projects that we're talking about, Aquamarine, do they not have state incentives as well from the North Carolina Economic Development?
They do. This particular project was awarded a Job Development Investment Grant, a J Dig, which is based on the payroll tax generated. So it's focused primarily on the jobs because that's how the state gets their income from these projects. And then locally, it's based on property tax.
Okay. I just wanted for the viewing audience to know that Cabarrus County is not the only ones that do incentive grants. There's others in the states right there with us. And their support helps us, between our support and their support, it helps us land these big companies to come.
That's right. And you heard earlier, North Carolina Railroad Company is another that's putting money in to support this project.
Don't have a question, but I would just say we've discussed these several times in closed sessions, and there's never been any objections, and all in agreement that they were good with this. So I don't know, I guess that changed from the time we had the conversations where you were in agreement.
Yeah, I've just, I've done some research on some things that I just have some issues with right now. So it's fine.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
That motion passes four to one. And we move now to item G5, Economic Development Investment for Red Bull North America Incorporated. And we are happy, we we would, we want you to come up this many times at every meeting.
Every meeting. We would too. So last but not least, Component Three is Red Bull North American Incorporated, North America Incorporated. They are proposing an 800,000-square-foot regional distribution center. Site locations at the grounds at Concord, 2321 Concord Parkway South. Projected investment for Component Three is estimated to be 140 million in real and personal property. They plan to create 90 jobs with average wages above our current county average wage. Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on that estimated 140 million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a seven-year, 85% economic development grant. Estimated grant for that seven-year term is $4,549,809. Net revenue to the county during that grant term is over 800,000. And again, happy to answer any questions for Component Three.
Okay, questions for Samantha? I have one question. How long have we been talking about Project Aquamarine?
A year now. We were first introduced to this project back in August of last year.
It seems longer than a year.
Does. Through the year we've had, especially does.
Yes, yes, definitely so. But but we have been talking about this project for a year, and it was, I think we're good, I think they're coming, then it was, I think they're gone, I think they're in another county. I started to name the county. And then, so it's been a real
Very hot and cold, up and down, active, put on the inactive list, saying, yes, we were happy to see this
They've changed their mind, they're going to do something.
Absolutely.
So it has been just about the full gamut. So so anybody that that says, well, this was a slam dunk, it was going to come anyway, certainly hadn't experienced what you you folks have experienced, and certainly us to a lesser degree. But I think it's important for people to to realize just how competitive these projects are. And and also, I can personally think of two presentations that I have been involved in during that same period of time that are have completely gone away at this this point. So it it is a competitive situation.
Very much so.
And we appreciate your representation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Samantha? Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this one? Oh, yeah, the public hearing again. This, if somebody would get up and talk, it would help me remember. I'd like to open the public hearing on this matter and invite anyone to the front that would like to speak.
I'll get up and talk, so you won't get me left out, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
So I'm Sean, I live at 813 Middleton Circle in Harrisburg, North Carolina. I'll be honest with you, I didn't come here tonight to talk about any of this stuff. This is kind of just me just listening in. But one question, me and my wife are kind of going back and forth with all this. What happens with all this? We know kind of the landscape we're in today where, how do I put it? People are getting paid more to stay at home. You know what I'm talking about? What happens if we get this and this all starts going in and we don't have the people to do fill the fill the positions and the jobs? I guess my, that would be a concern I would have because then it doesn't matter how much you spend or how much incentivizing you give, you're never going to see any of that tax revenue because the companies aren't going to make any revenue because they have no employees to make the products they want to make. So that was my only question and concern, I guess.
In the in the event that this company is unable to operate, acquire employees or or anything else, then then they would not begin production. They probably would not build a facility. They would not pay any taxes, and therefore they would get no incentive. So the incentive only happens after they do what they say they're going to do, they pay their taxes, and then they go through a rigorous audit process. And then, once that is satisfied, then they receive their incentive. Yeah, great, thank you. Any anybody else that would like to speak in the public hearing?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Larry Pittman, 250 Roberta Road, Southwest in Concord. I'm not going to argue with you all about incentives tonight. We know that we don't agree on that. But I just want to respond to Representative, I mean, Commissioner Shu, I keep trying to promote people here. Commissioner Shu mentioned that the state does this too. And I just want to clarify, if it's a standalone bill, I always vote no on those. I oppose J Dig and all that stuff. Then they turn around and put it in the budget, and there's things like I'm trying to get money for the courthouse here, and some other good stuff that's in the budget, and they end up having to vote for the budget that has a lot of stuff in it I don't agree with. So that happens. You know, so if I ever vote for that, it's because they put it in the budget and they didn't have a choice. But as long as it's standalone, I vote no. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
I'd have to say That's the first time we've ever had two speakers at one of our economic development public hearings.
Well, I guess I guess my plea for speakers was effective. So seeing seeing no other, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
I will make a motion to approve an economic development agreement, seven years, 85% between Red Bull North America Incorporated and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board and subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I I did want to make a comment that one of the things that we didn't talk about is, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but I did catch where you live, Harrisburg, because that's where I live. There is pressure on the community as a whole to turn out a labor force that is productive. And there's also pressure on our school system, which we're proud of, to turn out students that these companies, when they're shopping and looking at our area, are happy with what they see when they come here. Now, we don't get them all. Paige would tell you, it's, she's out working extremely hard, and it is very, very competitive. But that is incumbent on our upon our board to support local business so that they can find people. And it is a tragedy that people are getting paid more to stay home than than work. And hopefully, at some level, that's getting taken care of. But it's also incumbent for our board to support our school system, which includes charter schools. So I'm going to go revert all the way back to the beginning of the meeting. We are not anti-charter school, and we are not anti-dogwood. In fact, we we want as many good educational opportunities in this county as you can possibly get. And that's why, because we want these companies to come here, and we want this to be a thriving business community and a great place to live, which evidently it is because our population went up how much? 22%? Was that the number?
About 27%, I think.
27%. So again, it falls on us to make sure we keep that quality of life.
It's about 45% once they get on the Stoney's Road.
That may be true. So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make that quick comment because it's it's more than us just saying, hey, let's throw something out there and see if this company will come. There's a lot of hard work that goes into making sure that they know what they're going to get when they get here and that we're providing it every day with with every meeting that we have, that we're providing that that I've lost my train of thought, but that that we provide the incentives for these companies to get here. So anyway, thank you for my comments, and I apologize for rambling.
No, no problem. Any other discussion on this motion that's on the floor? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
That motion passes four to one. Thank you. And thank you, Paige and Samantha. This is a, and we've had several exciting days surrounding this project. And to to get it finally approved is is exciting indeed, and we appreciate your hard work. Okay, we move now to item G6, Physical Recovery Funds Request Overview. And we are delighted to have Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris to talk with us.
So, good evening. And Lauren's going to pull up the slide deck that you should have in front of you. As you'll notice, this is different than the presentation we intended to be giving. When we talked two weeks ago, the plan was for staff to put together a spending plan. We would share that with you tonight for your reaction. In the intervening time, the recovery grant process closed on August 6th, 10 days ago, and the community really responded. And we had over 100 proposals that we received. And so staff is obviously going to need more time to digest those. And then the other thing that is different about this process from the last grant process we ran is last time we received requests within what we had available. This time, as you will see, the requests significantly exceed what we have available. So we're going to quickly rock through the requests by category, and so we've broken them out. And then at the end, we really need some feedback from the board on on what your priorities are and what that consensus is. And so you'll notice each of these tables is very consistent. And so at the top, you have the category, you have the amount eligible, and then you have some examples of the organizations that submitted proposals. And so we'll start with after-school programs. We received $2.3 million of eligible requests in that category. And you can see the entities that that included, many of which are familiar to you, the Boy Scouts of America, Boys and Girls Club, and the Bethel Enrichment Center. In terms of childcare programs, these are daycare programs, and we had $2.7 million of eligible requests. And again, those eligible entities included Families First, the Logan Community CDC, and Millgale Baptist. On the behavioral and mental health category, this was a significant one. We had almost $21 million of requests in this category. And those were from things like Daymark, the Health Alliance, and then the Healthcare Foundation for the Hospital. This is one category, I would note, that we have, Karen Calhoun has sent these submissions out to partners, our new LME MCO, for them to review them on our behalf and to give us their recommendations for which of these we might want to pursue. On the disparities front, and so again, this is the aimed at addressing healthcare disparities, education disparities, et cetera, it's all outlined in the regulations. We had $2.6 million of eligible requests, and you can see the entities that are included In terms of food assistance, we had $3.2 million of eligible requests. That included Meals on Wheels, Bethel Enrichment, and One Can. We had $1.8 million of healthcare requests, and that was the Community Free Clinic, Gate Pregnancy Resource Center, and Piedmont Residential. On the housing front, again, this is a very significant request, and so we had almost $36 million of requests in the housing category. A big portion of this was aimed at acquiring affordable housing units or land for affordable housing units. And then in terms of cooperative Christian ministry, that was to make some significant investments aimed at the homeless population. We had $2.2 million of requests in the job training category. And so you can see those organizations listed there, including Rowan Cabarrus Community And then these last two buckets are more general requests, and these are, the legislation as written allows us to address lost revenue. And so on the left side, you see nonprofits. And so we had about $6.3 million requested for lost revenue experienced by nonprofits. A significant portion of that was the Rowan Cabarrus YMCA. From small businesses, we received requests for lost revenue totaling about $13 million. This is one category that we have some concern about. It's been talked about a lot within the state about the legality of providing such assistance. And so RICH is working on a legal opinion here locally that will help guide whether or not we can provide that support. And then the last two categories are substance misuse. We had a $2 million request there, Families First, Hope Haven, and the Partnership for Children. And then the last one is tourism, which is another eligible category, and that was almost $1 million, and that's from the Cabarrus Arts Council. So those are the combined requests received through the recovery grant process. The next couple slides deal with internally identified projects by the county. And so you'll see on the next slide, the first large opportunity is recreation. So that's about $24 million. And as you know, we have multiple parks that need amenity upgrades from the Courthouse Public Plaza to the Northeast Park, ball fields that we're dealing with in Mount Pleasant to Rob Wallace Park. The interim rule as written allows recreation investments to be made with these dollars. If we use these dollars for those investments, that frees up county money to meet other capital needs. And so this is one option that we have available to us. The Cabarrus Health Alliance has requested about $3.3 million. And you can see there the type of requests they've received, they sent over, community health workers wanting to open a Concord facility, and then also a mobile health clinic. And then the last two items that we've identified, and some of these are a work in progress, particularly under the utility category. And so this is primarily stormwater and water improvement projects that are, again, an eligible expense with these funds. And you can see the variety of projects that we have pending where we could use these dollars to offset those expenses. And then the last one, which is a very small number, are just our departments have identified COVID-related expenses that they have for PPE, cleaning supplies, et cetera. And that $347,000 is what they identified. So to put that all in perspective, that totals $124.1 million of requests. We have just over $42 million of funds that we are expecting. And so as you can see, we have some tough decisions before us in terms of what our priorities are. And again, that is what we are looking for tonight. And really, there's two types of feedback that the board can provide that would be useful to staff as we put together a spending plan. The first is if there are particular categories that you see up here that either you want us to steer clear of or that you think are a higher priority for funding. And then the second is you might have particular second is you might have particular principles or values that you think are important for us to consider. And I'll give you an example of that, is you may say you want us to avoid payroll expenses that are recurring in nature. So if we fund a grant and it's primarily payroll, what's going to happen in two or three years when that grant funding runs out? And so that could provide direction to staff to avoid those types of awards in our recommendation. So that is the bulk of the presentation. And again, I would turn it over to the board for your feedback and guidance as we hope to develop a spending plan in the next few, a few weeks.
I just have a quick question on this. In each little block, you've got 6.3 million eligible. I'm just looking at nonprofit right now. Are there additional entities besides the ones that are included in those? Or are those the only ones that are eligible out of the submissions? Just so I have a clear understanding.
These numbers reflect what is deemed eligible based on what we received.
Okay.
And so there are a subset of requests received that we do not believe are eligible.
Okay.
That are not reflected here.
The entities listed in here, this one has four listed. Are those the only ones that are eligible?
Uh, no, no. That's just the amount of space available.
Got it.
Correct. Those are the largest request in each category.
That was my next question.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I kind of figured. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And I do want to point out, because I think that's a good question, one, one item you will not see here. We did receive two terrific requests around broadband in our rural areas. They are not reflected here because there is a lot of movement at the state level and at the federal level that we would want to wait to see what happens before we made those types of investments.
And so you want feedback from us. This is a pretty big, pretty, pretty big topic to, to, to offer feedback, but I, and I'll certainly kick it off. But to me, the, the areas that, that should receive the, the greatest attention first are the people that have been damaged by the events of the, the past year. And, um, and I, and I know, for, for example, childcare has been a real roller coaster for people, people in, in that business, as well as parents with job insecurities and, and trying to make arrangements for childcare. So that, that, that is one that jumps out at me, that, that has been impacted. Certainly, the Health Alliance has, has been a, a, a critical component of the, the work that we've done over the past year. And I'm, I'm not, I don't know what the projects are. I'm just looking at the, at the, at the titles here. The after-school care, I think, falls right in line with childcare as, as to having been impacted by, by the events of the past year. We've heard an awful lot of discussion about, about mental health and, and the impact. I mean, that is a priority issue as far as I'm concerned in our community anyway. And the additional strains that have been placed on that based on the events of the past year are, in my opinion, take it high up there. You know, I, I think I could probably go through and just about talk about every single one of these. So I'm not sure I'm accomplishing, but, and, and then the housing piece of it, which, which, you know, I've mentioned a number of times at our previous meetings that we do have funds available to assist people that have, are behind on their rent. And, and we've got quite, quite a bit of that yet to distribute. But, and then I think the next one for me would be the small business. But you said there are legality issues. You know, we've seen some, some, some small businesses in our communities that have actually been devastated by the loss, loss of, of revenue over the, the years. So with that, I will anxiously hear comments from my fellow board members.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to mention, you know, I see several categories, Rodney, that's crossover. When I'm, when I say crossover, now you touched on it briefly, but housing. And I would like to bring the light utilities because in the emergency rental assistance funds that we got, I think we had 10 or 12, 13 million dollars for that. We've had a couple of million dollars requested, but yet we hadn't got out but about a million of that. And then part of that emergency rental assistance was utilities. And so you see, that's sort of a crossover there. I think we need to be a little bit more definitive, you know, particularly like the utilities and for the housing. And I concur with what Mr. Morris said, you know, about the, the COVID expenses, people that were adversely affected because of COVID. I think that tourism probably has suffered, but I only seen that we just had one applicant, the Arts Council. And I don't know how tourism, how that affected tourism affected the Arts Council. I mean, maybe I'm missing some of the puzzle there. I don't know. But I'm sure there's other areas, though, that, that has, because of tourism, people couldn't travel and this and that and all. And we lost revenue from that. But how we could address it, that I don't know. And a couple of the others, you know, the substance misuse. But I, I think we need to be a little more specific, you know, on these items as to, and try to not be crossover. That's just my input on it.
I might just add a little bit to your question about, about the Arts Council. And I'm, I'm not sure how that got a tourism label on it. But I think probably the, the majority of, of the strain that's been placed on them has been from the fact that they had to cancel all of their performances for an entire year, which do produce revenue. And the, the biggest one, I think, for them is the, the cancellation of their annual fundraising breakfast that they have every year, which is probably one of the largest attended events in the county. And so, of course, they, they were unable to do that. So that, I'm sure, very negatively impacted.
And, and you're right, Mr. Chairman. You're 100% right. And I, I didn't mean that in an adverse way toward the Arts Council.
Right.
Because I think that Noel and her staff, they do an excellent job. And they, they do a lot for Cabarrus County, our students and all. And so I'm not saying that in an adverse way at all, actually, you know, to the contrary of that. But how they got in tourism, I don't know.
Oh, I, I think, Commissioner Stug, I think the Arts Council attracts tourists with, with a lot of their shows, whether it's adjacent counties and whether it's people coming in. And, and part of what they're doing is, is, as, as Chairman Morris said, is they've lost revenues over the last year. But part of what they're requesting is to expand their programs and to broaden their reach, not just in county, but regionally, to bring more people in. So they are, they're trying to, I guess, grow, but not just grow in size, but grow in what they offer to the community.
And I think, what I would add is, for the Arts Council in particular, is a lot of these requests were two different categories. So they did ask for lost revenue. That was part of their request. I think it was 300 something thousand dollars. The other portion of the request and the reason it ended up in tourism was related to, is it the Davis Theater? It was a theater, and extending the operating hours to attract more consumers. And so that's why it ended up, because the bulk of their request was not lost revenue, but an expansion of a theater in Cabarrus County.
You know, I surely wouldn't be opposed to that, simply because they do such an enormous thing for our students and for the county. And, and I'm just thankful we got people that's willing to reach out and expand and do something, you know? And make, help, help us make this a better place. And the Arts Council surely does do that.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to belabor the point, but, but what the county manager mentioned about expanding some of those performances to increase tourism. If, if anyone needs an example of how that works, drop into a restaurant in downtown Concord on the night that they have a performance at Davis Theater, Davis Theater, and see if you can get served without a reservation. So it really does attract folks into our, our other businesses. So by doing that, we're supporting the other small businesses in the county. So it, it does link together.
And I guess that the other thing too is, as, as this gentleman was asking about the jobs, a qualified workforce is at the top of the list, or, or, it used to be location, location, location. Now it's really a qualified workforce. But as you trickle down through the list, that quality of life is, is also important to them. Where, where are their, where are their kids going to school? Where can they go play? And, and what can I do? What can my wife and I do at night and not have to travel all around? So, and they're trying to address some of those.
So this is very difficult to do from looking at these broad categories and these large numbers and knowing that we can't even do a third of it hardly. So, I mean, when I look at it, I, I think I would lean toward the housing, the mental health, the childcare, and the Health Alliance. But it's really hard not to mention several more of these. So that's a, that's a difficult task.
I think we got the entire list now.
Probably so. And, um...
But I think as you start to drill down on what those actual requests are...
Right. When you get to the projects, when we know more, yeah.
So you may, you know, it may be that you, you, you say, okay, let's, let's target that particular project. Or, or you could even look at, okay, well, 5% goes here and 2% goes here.
Right.
So it's, it's going to be a challenge. I think we'll have a more robust conversation at the work session, hopefully. If not before, then we may bring you in two by two and show you some more details.
Okay, so if we, you knew a couple of the top projects in each of those categories, it might help you drill down to where you felt like it could have the biggest impact.
Right.
I was trying to find whichever ones have not been mentioned, just to throw them out there and make this clear as mud for Rodney.
I will tell you, the, the three lowest items on there are categories. So from nonprofit childcare, substance use, those rows, those are easier to fit in because the dollars are much smaller. And so really, it's that top row, in, in guidance around that top row. And we've said, the small business one is a tricky one, and we'll get a legal opinion on that. And I think there will be some limits to the amount, if we can provide assistance to the amount we can provide, that would be significantly less than that $13 million number, unfortunately. So it's really of those, housing, recreation, mental health, you know, any guidance that you can provide on those three categories. And what I've heard so far is housing and mental health. Those recreation items obviously will get covered within the county CIP. But if those are not a priority for this particular funding source, then that would clear up some of those dollars.
I think they're extremely important. But when it's compared to housing and mental health, I'm afraid it would have to come in third for me.
I would agree with that.
Mental health for me probably goes right, right to the top. And, and considering the opioid situation and coming on the heels of a lawsuit and all that, that substance abuse, I think that, that certainly deserves some attention. And then after that, I mean, it's, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to pick and hard to say. There's, there's some of the, some of the entities shown here I've heard of and know, some I've never heard of. And I'm sure, you know, they, they do good work, but I just don't know them. So they, it's just hard to pick something out if, if I don't know exactly who they are and what they do. But, and, but by the same token, I don't, I don't really want to just say, well, you figure it out. You know, I mean, it's really, it's, it's up to us to kind of pinpoint and show direction of where we want the board to go. So I just think it's going to take a little more, a little, little more time and effort.
And I'll echo the mental health and the housing is one, two of my big priorities. I did have a question. You said it's going to take a little bit more time. What is the deadline? Or when, when do we have to make the ultimate decisions on this? I guess that's my question.
So we do not have a deadline. We thought we had an August deadline, but that does not exist. So it is at the pleasure of the board.
Okay.
And I, I will say, they're, they've been encouraging us not to make a final plan until the final rule is implemented by Treasury. And that should happen in the coming weeks because that could change the guidance on how these funds could be used. And then I just wanted to point, ask one more question because it would be valuable to have some input on it. In, in the housing category, I think it's 10.3 million of that is a mortgage assistance program. And so any feedback from the board on whether that is something you would want to pursue would be along the lines of an ERAP, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, but aimed at folks that are behind on their mortgage. That is an eligible expense. Obviously, in this proposal, it is a third party that is offering to run that program rather than the county running it ourselves. But just getting some feedback, you have that, and then you have sort of land acquisition and property acquisition. Those are the two categories there. Any thoughts on mortgage assistance?
I would say that I would be very much in favor of that. As I referred someone today to our human services, that this was a, an individual that I was made aware of through the Red Cross, Cabarrus County resident, has been out of work due to COVID. If I understood correctly, this individual contracted the virus and was unable to work, was a single parent with, with children at home. So all the associated issues that come along with being ill and dealing with those things, and was in that very situation, that because of the amount of time that they have had to lose from work or, and have problems. So I think that is a directly COVID-related situation. So, so I would be very much in favor of that. And I'm sorry if I spoke over somebody.
No, that's okay. I was just going to correct myself, you know, on this utilities. I, I didn't notice that that was a county request instead of a request in general. When you list the EMS headquarters and all those different items for that 3 million utilities. So what I said didn't really pertain to this.
Yeah.
I just didn't catch the county part there. But, but for the others, with the new information that you gave, it's the top money and then priority at the top, all the way down. I totally agree with the housing and mental health for sure. And not only that, but, you know, we're working, trying to do something about homelessness in Cabarrus County. And so how that could tie into the housing, that, that I don't know. But don't you think so, Mr. Chairman, you know?
Absolutely.
Because we've talked about homelessness. And that is something that's, is with the community surveys, homelessness is right up there with public safety and a lot of different things. So definitely without a doubt, housing. But obviously, we can't do 35 million. But, you know, we can sure enough trim that down.
Well, I know that was challenging.
If you'd give us that information up front, that would have made it easier.
With few details. But I, I appreciate the feedback and that will be helpful as we move forward. If you have questions or want more information, you're more than welcome to review all of the proposals. Some are short, some are a little longer. But they're, certainly, we can make those available to you. Or if you have specific categories where you'd like to review the proposals, for example, housing, we can get those over to you. Just reach out to Mike or myself.
Thank you very much. And it's very encouraging that, that folks have participated in, in the, in the process. Hopefully, we can make good decisions. Great. All right. I think that concludes our new business for tonight. And we move to reports. First up is updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various other boards or committees. Does anyone have anything to report tonight? Nothing from the senior?
No, they do have a dance this Saturday.
Okay, dance at the senior center this Saturday. Great. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I can throw out just a comment, since I am the, the board's liaison member for WASAC, Cabarrus County Water and Sewer Authority. Needless to say, Cabarrus County's growing in leaps and bounds. And thanks to Samantha and, and Paige over here bringing all these big industries in that require a lot of usage of the facility. You know, we're, we're getting low on capacity. It's just that simple. And we did form a capacity allocation committee that's working with the different municipalities to come up with some type of a allocation for each municipality. And I just wanted to let everyone know that, that we're working on that. And then, of course, there's a future expansion of the WASAC plant in the making. Hopefully, it won't be too awful long, get that started, and increase the millions of gallons per day of production. And so I just wanted to bring that report. It's not a lot, but just wanted you to know, behind the scenes, the growth has had an impact on the water and sewer. And, but we're making provisions for... impact on the water and sewer, and, but we're making provisions for that, and hopefully, before too awful long, we get some things moving out there to the Rocky River Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? Okay, then we will move to general comments by board members, if anyone has anything they'd like to bring forward. I will, I will mention, we've alluded to it several times during this meeting, but we did get this past week, a report on the, the latest census. Cabarrus County's current population, 200 and, well, I, I was interviewed by one of the television stations, I think it's 225,800 or something like that, and I said, I'm, I'm already going with 226, 226,000 because I'm sure that we have grown since that report was taken, at least by that much, if not more. But I mean, that, that is something, I mean, obviously, we're, we're happy that people like Cabarrus County and want to live here, and we certainly love Cabarrus County and do everything we can to make it a desirable place to be. Other people must be responding to that, certainly. It comes with a price tag, it creates a lot of challenges that we have to deal with, but I think it was emphasized once again through the census numbers, when you look at other communities and the ones that have lost population over the past 10 years. It, if, if I had to choose the problems to deal with, I would rather choose the problems of growth than choosing the problems of shrinking. And I had an opportunity at our, our state association, held their annual conference this past week, and, you know, was talking with somebody about that very topic, and they were talking about another county that was having to consolidate three high schools into one because they had lost that many students in their, their community, and, and of course, they were having a great deal of challenges geographically, trying to, to determine where that would be, to try to satisfy people, you can just imagine how that would be. And so, so we're fortunate to not have to deal with, with, with those situations, but Cabarrus County was the third law, third fastest growing county in the state of North Carolina. Number one was Johnson County, number two was Brunswick County, and number three was Cabarrus. So, so we definitely are in a desirable location, and people want to be here, and so these projects like we approved tonight are where we get the tax base that allows us to, to handle that and provide jobs for those people and all the other things that go along with it. Any other comments? If not, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters related to pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A3 and 4.
I may.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. We are now in closed session. Thank you all in the audience for joining us tonight, as well as our television audience.
They should get an award.
Yeah, you guys hung out.
Had to be here, has ever stayed for a whole week.